Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Ovani. Tonight is the planning, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's Tuesday, April 6th at 7:30 PM. This meeting is being held via go-to meeting, by a virtual meeting as per the Governor's Executive Order, and Jeremy Ginsberg and myself are also in Town Hall in room 213. A quick announcement, tonight is my father-in-law's 87th birthday, April 6th. The Papa is supposed to be watching someplace. I don't see him on TV, but happy birthday Papa. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be sitting here. Tonight, thank you Papa. Tonight, we have a public hearing, which is the first time on our agenda. We're going to discuss, I can just read this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to discuss the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on the following bills currently being considered in the state legislature. SB means Senate Bill, HB means House Bill, H means Housing Committee, PD means Planning and Development Committee. While there are other bills, while there are other related bills, comments will be received for the following bills, which is, I'm not, I'm just gonna read the number. SB 804, SB 1024, SB 1027.
Give me a moment.
Who's that? Jim? SB 1068, HB 5683, HB 6107, HB 6430, HB 6521, HB 6611, and HB 6613. We're going to discuss these bills tonight. They've been on our docket for a while. The Commission urges other people to submit written testimonies or letters or emails that can be sent to Jeremy Ginsberg here in Town Hall, and he'll give you a little bit more information on that. Tonight, we're gonna have a public meeting. We're gonna try to limit it to an hour of public comment from the Darien Public Taxpayers and Residents and Property Owners. And we're gonna limit each speaker to three minutes. Jeremy is gonna give us now the ground rules for this public hearing. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Sure, the public hearing tonight is an opportunity for folks to provide the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission with feedback and input on several General Assembly bills introduced in the state legislature for the 2021 legislative session. These bills referenced on tonight's agenda originated in either the CGA Joint Housing Committee or the Planning and Development Committee, and largely relate to statewide housing and zoning reform. I'd like to emphasize that the bills in Hartford are not being put forth by this Planning and Zoning Commission, and this Commission does not act upon or vote upon any legislation. As Mr. Ovani mentioned, in order to keep tonight's hearing as efficient as possible, we're asking folks to keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes, as we only have about an hour set aside for input and feedback tonight. So certainly, if you don't get a chance to speak following the hearing this evening, you may submit written testimony, as Mr. Ovani mentioned, letters or emails made out, sent to DarienPZC@darienct.gov through April 13th. We'll forward those emails on to Commission members. And at this time, the Commission does not anticipate taking any additional verbal comment. Of course, you're welcome to contact your state representatives at any time to voice your opinions of the proposed legislation. And if you click on the text box in the top right corner, we've put the two senators and two representatives who represent Darien and their email addresses. So if you wanted to send them an email, those are their email addresses. You can contact them directly. So Steve, we have a list of folks. We can just start taking them in order.
I'm just gonna give a quick.
Oh, go ahead.
Two seconds. And just for the record, our state delegation, which is, we have two centers, Mr. Bob Duff and Ms. Patricia Billy Miller, they were invited to tonight's meeting. They may be here, and if they're not here, they may watch it virtually, because it's a taped conference. Our other two representatives, Ms. Representative Terry Wood and Mr. Matt Blumenthal were also invited to tonight's meeting. They've also been copied on a bunch of letters that we've done, and that's actually the people that we're really speaking to. What the idea for tonight is for us to hear from the general public for Darien. If you're a resident or a property owner or a taxpayer, we want to hear from you. The one thing I just want to start is, this process started probably nine months ago for Jeremy and myself. It happened, we started, I think it is in July of 2020, as soon as Town Hall opened. Jeremy and our first selectman alerted personally myself to what was going on up in Hartford. Through the month of August, which is pretty much a month off for the Commission, there was a lot of research done relative to the bills up in Hartford. In September, we set a subcommittee for the purposes of reviewing all the bills. In October, I actually printed out all the bills in hard copy and delivered them to myself and the subcommittee and other people. Unbeknownst to myself, bills change over time, and they had eventually changed. Elections happened during November, so we didn't focus on too much, plus we had other implications. Then in January, we picked it up again. The first set of hearings up in the state Capitol was the weekend after President's Weekend, which is around February 18th. We did a testimony letter that was drafted by myself and approved by the Commission and sent it in as public testimony for that, for that conference, and that was dated November 2nd, which was after the fact. There was another set of hearings that was on March 15th, which is, I forget what the date that was, but we did another letter for testimony on March 14th and set that in. We've tried to get the word out to the general public for Darien and around town through the local media via the Darien Times and some other forms of electronic media, also the Darien Online. We also had a lot of the Darien Town staff, including Jeremy and professionals, to track these bills as they go. The one thing to remember is, and I'm a little bit new to the legislative process, that a lot of these bills come in and out, you have to look at them conceptually. You don't have to look at the details. You have to look at the concepts of the bills, because they change over time, but numbers change and items change. But a lot of the things that we're going to talk about tonight, Darien does a lot of them, such as a trust fund, inclusionary housing, and training of officers. We also did a couple of years ago, or about, yeah, it was 2019, 2020, we did a 20-year study of what Darien has done in terms of housing in our town. Over the past 20 years, we've built in excess of 850 dwelling units that are multifamily, and of that 850, it's about 31% affordable. Those projects include three 830G projects and two 100% affordable projects. The other towns in our peer group, and if you associated with the school group, our peer group, they look towards Darien for leadership. Jeremy Ginsberg is one of the most respected planners in the state of Connecticut. He's been a Darien Town employee for, I think, 25 years. And over this past nine-month period, a lot of planners' mother towns have reached out to him in our group for guidance. There are a couple of things in some of these bills and some of the concepts that we do not have in our town, which one of it's called, thing called ADU. It's also known as an accessory dwelling units. Over the years, we've had a lot of people that have come and asked for accessory dwelling units on their property. We have yet to permit it, but that's something that we're gonna review this year. One of the other concepts that we already have in our town, which is the inclusionary housing item. One of these bills, the state asked for 10% inclusionary housing based upon a trigger of 10 units. Our inclusionary housing today is, actually, it's a sliding scale. It starts at 20%, and it goes down to 12% when you get up to eight units. So I don't know if a lot of people have read the bills, know what's going on, but this is your chance to be able to speak to the Commission. And I think Fred has got a batting order. I'm gonna pick him at random. A piece of paper. So I know some people have submitted their names at the Town Hall, so we welcome everybody. Hopefully, we can get to everybody. We have an hour for this. And everyone talks three minutes, it means we can see 20 people. People talk for a minute, we can see more. But I would like to invite Natasha Tomeri, I think I'm saying that name properly, thank you, to turn on your microphone. What I just asked of you is state your name and your address and your affiliation with town, and you have the full microphone for three minutes. Please go ahead. Is she here? Okay, we'll go on to the next person on the list, and if Natasha comes up, that would be great. The next person on my list is Jim Solberg. I think he lives at Seven Contemptment Island. Jim, are you here? Please turn your microphone on and let's hear from you.
You did get my address correctly, so thank you. I am a Connecticut native and resident of Darien. I've lived in Darien since 1996. Thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff for the good work you're doing, Darien, and thank you for holding this hearing. I am strongly opposed to state-driven zoning and housing legislation. I am strongly opposed to political operatives replacing the good judgment of hard-working and informed boards and commissions. There's a lot of statistics that the proponents of this legislation toss around. I think every Connecticut voter should understand a definitive 2001 study by two Harvard researchers, easy to find on the internet. The study's called "The Curly Effect." I'm gonna read two short excerpts from that study. The first, quote, "James Michael Curley, a four-time mayor of Boston, used wasteful redistribution to his poor Irish constituents and incendiary rhetoric to encourage richer citizens to emigrate from Boston, thereby shaping the electorate in his favor. As a consequence, Boston stagnated, but Curley kept winning elections," end quote. The researchers continued, "We call this strategy the Curly Effect, meaning increasing the relative size of one's political base through distortionary wealth-reusing policies." Another quote, "But it is hardly unique to Curley. Politicians around the world have pursued policies that encourage immigration of their political enemies, raising poverty but gaining political advantage." Now, this is my quote, "The desire for the Curly Effect in Connecticut to take further root is at the core of this legislation. In this context, every Darien citizen should be aware of certain organizations like D Segregate Connecticut and Darien Talks Housing that are behind this zoning and housing legislation. An example of their thinking can be found in the words of Darien resident Von Klein, a public figure and vocal supporter of these groups. She has stated, '29% of Darien households are cost burdened by housing,' and she goes on to say, 'These families pay upwards of 30% of their income on housing costs.' Ms. Klein uses this leading aggregate numbers, proposes she would determine how much of her family's resources should go to housing, and believes she can help people by putting them in affordable housing. She ignores the cost of infrastructure, taxes, decline in housing values, etc. Remember, Ms. Klein was handpicked by the State Department of Housing, for the State Department of Housing, by destructive Governor Malloy. He failed, and she failed. I will leave you with three additional important thoughts. One, any and all efforts to give the state more control over zoning and housing should be defeated. Don't be fooled by concessions to their initial proposals. If they put their foot in the door, their proposal will take full effect. Two, we demand full transparency, no last-minute legislative changes. And three, very, very important, there's an unholy alliance between the proponents of the zoning and housing legislation and the real estate developers across the state. This legislation will produce huge returns for developers without addressing the problems of the city. These developers will return great financial payback to the politicians and group that support this legislation. The cities in Connecticut will not be helped. As is often said, follow the money. In closing, I believe we can rebuild Connecticut's city through economic growth. Rather than pursuing social engineering, the legislature should inspire private sector initiatives and sound growth-oriented policies. The legislature needs to change how their houses run, not destroy the town we run so well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person on my list, am I gonna follow this list, Fred? Is Liz Geiger. I think she lives at 30 Maple Street, and if Natasha Tomeri comes in, please, I don't know, hit the chat button or raise your hand or something. Ms. Geiger, please say you're welcome. Turn your microphone on, ma'am.
In a couple of instances where people called the land use bureau and said,
Can you? Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Geiger.
Hi, Chairman Ovani and members of Planning and Zoning. I am Elizabeth Geiger. I've spoken to you all before. I am a resident of Darien, and I am also chairman of the Architectural Review Board. So tonight, as it relates to the recently proposed zoning legislation, I'd like to talk to you guys about visual cues, architecture, and preservation. You've heard this from me before, but we're gonna go back in. Coming to Connecticut in general, and in Darien, there are a lot of similar reasons people are drawn to this area. Schools, tax affordability, and when we're speaking about Darien, we talk about easy commutes, coastal proximity. And then one element always in the back of people's mind, whether it's said or unsaid, is the beauty of New England, and Darien, the beauty of our town. I don't want residents of this town or any town in Connecticut to take this for granted. Our historical structures, our landscapes, our spaces, they give each of our towns a unique architectural fabric that tell our story. Long before we were here, long after I was here, this architectural language will tell this story. It has taken a lot of hard work and deliberate attention that we have the diversity of architecture, landscape, and distinct neighborhood communities in Darien and all over Connecticut. This brings pride and respect to our town, to our neighbors, our community, our municipalities. It's both residents, elected officials of our town that have worked to ensure these visual cues remain. Again, architecture, historical structures, landscapes, open spaces. In Darien alone, we have four resident-serving boards that work on this behalf for this sole purpose. They work to ensure public opinion, public safety, and ensure that zoning regulations as it relates to the environment and their neighborhood are followed. No one, I personally believe that no one knows their towns better than the people that live in it and that run it. The legislation being proposed here, a state-mandated multifamily development plan focused around transit centers will ultimately destroy the architectural fabric of our communities. A majority of our historical homes, our structures, our landscapes are centered around these transportation hubs. That was the settlement pattern of our ancestors. They needed ease of proximity. That's where a lot of historic homes are. Antique homes at these town centers are easy targets for developers. They're often undervalued in the marketplace, and they're easily identified. So any remaining number of historic buildings we find in these areas, this unique visual character that we cherish about our towns will be destroyed with the current language of this legislation. So in lieu of that, we will find developers taking advantage of the legislation with the language as written. Multifamily complexes, replacement structures will come in place of these single-family homes, and these structures tend to be large volume. They tend to have lots of paved parking areas, nonexistent parking, minimal landscaping, and they register out of scale with our environment and are detrimental to the neighborhood community. Oftentimes, too, they use low-grade materials. Sorry, I thought I was interrupted. They use low-grade materials to compromise the. Okay, sorry, I thought there was a bump. I'm sorry. They often use low-grade materials that compromise durability and increase long-term maintenance costs, and compromise the safety of the residents then living in them long term. So my takeaway from all this is, I don't think this is an all-or-nothing situation. What it is, I think we need to look at these bills and rewrite the language to speak more to our individual communities and the needs of those. Low-income housing absolutely needs to be in any and all future developments. That's never a question, not in Darien or at any town that I have heard. That is always on the table and something we always will, should absolutely consider. Yeah?
If you could finish up.
Finishing. We also need to write in the preserving of our natural landscape and our historical buildings, and including in a resident's opinion and local municipality, and the safety consideration therein. So take away our local zoning, take away our public hearings, that just only removes the property rights and our essential checks and balances system. And if I'll do one last quote, I'm speaking for our town historian. She can't be here tonight, so let me merge my thing just a little bit longer with this last quote. Our town historian, Marion Castell, sent me a quote for tonight's hearing. She's been our town historian for a good 20, 30 years now. Marion writes, "Few towns in America have the luxury to have the distinction to have buildings of 300 years still standing that have been expertly blended into our rare environment of meadows, rock walls, and beaches. Local planning and zoning has the responsibility to sensitively put all these separate elements, particularly old and new, architecture together. It is the visual weaving of these separate elements that make Darien irreplaceable in America, as well as giving pride in herself." Thank you, Commission.
Thank you very much. The next person, I'm gonna call him, okay, Fred, is that right? Okay, the next person would be Peter McGinnis, 22, Robin Hood Lane. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners. Tonight, I would like to speak about water. Pursuant to legislation passed by the General Assembly, Section 25-33H1 of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies require each Water Utility Coordinating Committee, a group comprised of water supply engineers, water experts, and water company officials, to prepare long-range, regional, integrated reports. It's a process that takes quite a bit of time. They create an inventory of existing conditions, and they identify any water supply issues, deficiencies, and needs, and they do that in a 5, 20, and a 50-year planning horizon. The latest report for this region was on March 20th, 2018, and under that plan, issued under the auspices of an engineering firm called Malone and McBroom, the panel of engineers and expert planning body-water professionals projected our population expectations going out 5, 20, and 50 years, and projected water demand by user category, including residential and commercial, for what is our southwest water complex area. And for anyone that's not familiar with that, we are tied at the hip with three other towns and one city, Stamford, New Canaan, Greenwich, and Darien. And all the related reservoir and water tributaries which provide water to us, drinking water. It's interesting to note here that in the midterm projections that were forecasted for the population of Darien, they suggested in this report that our population would decrease over the intermediate term, and over the longer-term horizon would increase at a total of 10% over 50 years. One clear conclusion to the 2018 integrated plan for our region, Darien, Greenwich, Stamford, and New Canaan, is that the southwest public water supply area is projected to be structurally deficient in water supply. This assumes marginal population growth, and also does not assume any adverse climatic, climate, global warming conditions that might affect our water supply. Specifically, for the five-year projection from 2018, when the plan was developed, to 2013, which is five years later, the Fairfield Southwest Reservoir and Tributary System is expected to have a deficit of 3,259,000 gallons per day. The 20-year projection, we will have a deficit of 3,889,000 gallons per day. And the 50-year projection will have a deficit of 5,169,000 gallons per day. That's a lot of water. So short-term, they're building temporary pipes from the Norwalk reservoir and also from Bridgeport, and they're getting permission from DEEP, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, on a temporary basis to pipe in water. So it's no wonder that in the past few years, we've been placed on summer water restrictions, and that in November 2020, the Putnam Reservoir was only 33% full.
Sorry? If you could finish up, Mr. McGinnis?
So these projections don't incorporate unbridled new home construction due to reckless development mandates, and any encouragement of unbridled housing development and growth without consideration of water supply issues is irrational. And this very disjointed planning process between water supply planning and local and regional land use planning has long been recognized. I'm gonna spare you the quote, but there's a quote here on affordable housing in the same 2018 quote. What all this water talk illustrates is that zoning and development must be closely coordinated with the necessary resources to support development. Local water, water source systems, or lack thereof, any sewer system, infrastructure issue, local roads, these are all very, very local issues. In conclusion, to allow builders, building contractors, and real estate speculators to come in, make unfettered development determinations as upright, fully enabled by these proposed bills, as to how much to build, how dense to build, where to build, will mean that someday, with all this unbridled growth, we may now turn on our water faucets in our own kitchen and find out that indeed the well is dry.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments and your time. Very well researched. The next person on my list is Sarah Brown, 14 Salem Streets. Ms. Brown, are you here?
Yes. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Sarah Brown, and I'm a nonprofit administrator in Norwalk, Connecticut. I'm testifying to oppose SB 1024 because the legislation would remove local autonomy over zoning and is not a proven way to address economic mobility. As a taxpaying citizen, I have input into the development, planning, and zoning, and if it's given to the state, I lose that representation. Taxpayers of a town know what is best for their communities. This legislation takes that right away. I already put up with a congested town, and this legislation would contribute to it. I'm also concerned that we have high-income earners leaving the state, which has negatively impacted our state income tax revenues, and as a result, we have continual budget deficits. This is not sustainable long-term planning. Wealthy retired citizens are the perfect residents using less public services while giving back to their community. They have plenty of time to volunteer and donate within their community. This portion of the population is leaving, and there is a dearth of resources to address local issues. I'm also opposed to the legislation as a way to address economic mobility. I've served as a US Peace Corps volunteer and worked in development at Save the Children in Fairfield, Connecticut, and know from experience what best practices are to improve economic mobility. In my testimony, I've included examples of what our state legislatures could consider as best practices, and consider putting legislation and resources toward those that are evidence-based and proven to address poverty, not recreating the wheel with legislation that is not proven. Also, having the disadvantaged moved to an area with higher living expenses is not sustainable and will not help them save for the future. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments, ma'am. Thank you very much. The next person on my list is Janet Kling, 20, Weaver Lane. Is Ms. Kling here? Welcome. You're muted, I think. There you go.
Can you hear me? Hi. All right. Dear Chairman Ovani and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm Janet Kling of 20 Weaver Lane. I'm on the board of the Darien Land Trust, but I'll be testifying today on behalf of myself. Tonight, I'd like to speak to some of the environmental impacts of these zoning bills. I've heard the narrative being pushed by D Segregate CTE that smart growth around transit stations prevents suburban sprawl. That may have been true 30 years ago when ridership was increasing, and we all are very aware of how much Metro North rail ridership is down right now, about 80%. And even Governor Lamont is seeking a combined $82 billion savings from reducing rail and bus services in his latest budget plan. First of all, suburban sprawl isn't the issue in Darien. Where we're pushed up against the coast and being just under 13 square miles and a population of over 21,000, we're already 95% developed. Our town is also in a very low-lying flood-prone coastal community, where DEEP has repeatedly warned against overdevelopment. Just look at Darien Train Station, how it's flooded every single time there's a storm. And of the five large environmental groups in Connecticut that D Segregate CTE tried to recruit into their coalition, only two signed on to support their proposal. Connecticut Land Conservation Council, the Nature Conservancy, and Trust for Public Land did not, after hearing their presentation prior to any bills were even crafted. So clearly, there's controversy in their ideas, even though everyone cares about affordability and social equity. One of the bills that passed from the Planning and Development Committee, HB 6611, isn't talked about enough since everyone's so focused on SB 1024. This so-called Fair Share Bill uses an arbitrary sliding. This so-called fair share bill uses an arbitrary sliding scale to require towns to develop up to 20% affordable units or be subjected to any aggrieved party or activist groups to sue the towns with town paying for their legal expenses. Under this unfair fair share bill, Darien's housing stock would have to triple, yes, you heard me correctly, to over 18,000 units if we actually followed SB 1024's 10% affordability requirement for developers. That is not smart growth. That's urbanization, which Sarah Bronin wrote an entire book on. So that is the state eliminating every unique quality of every Connecticut town and making all of us into white planes. It also seems like a social experiment that was devised out of a textbook with no basis in reality. Are kids supposed to be eating lunch at 7:30 a.m. because there is only so much space in the cafeteria? Although SB 1024 recently had its most problematic components removed, the remaining language is still very concerning, especially around the requirement of this alternative sewage treatment plant, which the Connecticut Department of Health has publicly written testimony stating they do not have the bandwidth under current resources to regulate or even develop guidelines for the towns to regulate. Officials from Rhode Island and New York states have reported on their high failure rates, 50% within five years due to their complexity and high cost of maintenance. So the state is basically forcing your commission to accept these systems as part of permitting process when DPH nor our own health department have the means or rules to monitor them. This is an environmental and public health crisis waiting to happen when untreated wastewater generated from hundreds of additional housing units end up on our streets and into Long Island Sound. I urge you to resist any and all attempts to urbanize Darien. We need to stand up against the senseless densification of our beautiful historical suburban town. Please help protect and preserve our open space for not only our community, but also the pollinators and animals that desperately rely on pathways through our town to access our precious coastal resources. Thank you so much for listening to my testimony.
We appreciate this, Ms. Kling. Thank you very much. The next person, the person on my list is Carrie Cardone and the person after that is Janice Jennings. Carrie Cardone, I think you live at 17 Park Lane. Where's Carrie? I saw her. There she is. Welcome, Carrie.
Thank you, Chair Olveny and the rest of the Planning and Zoning Commission for recognizing me and allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Carrie Cardone. I live at 17 Park Lane in Darien. For those of you that are unfamiliar with our street, we are a small, non-conforming private road on the Stamford border that was made more for hot courses than cars. In fact, part of our garage still looks like a stable. Although our side of the street looks to be over the half-mile radius from the Groenbroek Train Station located in Stamford, I fear that the other side of our street may fall within the boundaries set forth by the various proposed bills. Our private street can barely accommodate two car lanes, much less a fire truck should an emergency happen if a 10-unit complex were to be built on Park Lane and there is no required off-street parking for all the new units being developed. Furthermore, our street has also burdened the current sewage system, causing backup into washing machines a few years back. While most residents have installed bath flow valves to prevent this, the company still comes out once a year to pump out the system. Imagine the cost if you added more units to our quaint street. These are all very specific issues that can, that only the closest and most impacted by a project would know, not some bureaucratic group in Hartford creating form-based codes that seek to allow as-of-right multifamily developments with no planning and zoning oversight or public hearings. Lastly, I sent a letter opposing all four bills that would affect local zoning regulations to Bob Duff. As Senator Duff is known to do, he sent a generic email back to me saying, quote, "I know of no bills and legislation that seek to have the state of Connecticut take over local control zoning decisions." However, I am aware of bills that seek to make zoning changes, especially with transit-oriented development in an effort to promote economic development, development and affordable housing in Connecticut. Is that not political speak for doing the exact opposite of what we're afraid of? But under the guise of making the transit system a hub for a portable housing, has anyone taken Metro North lately to see how expensive a ticket costs to ride into New York City? Shouldn't the initiative be to keep jobs in Connecticut instead of providing affordable housing only to shift jobs out? Bob Duff cares very little about Darien and knows perfectly well that we are a cash cow for Hartford. He also knows that Hartford is a financial disaster and that most of the Darien constituents want no part of Hartford running our town's business. We are aware that the as-of-right multifamily developments that are being suggested to be added back to these bills, which will in fact take away local decision-making, prevent max caps on multifamily developments of over 15 units per acre and planning and zoning will no longer be allowed to have public hearings on such projects. These are very real concerns and they do represent a very real loss of control. It is negligent on Senator Duff's part not to fully disclose what is in these bills and with his constituents. But I expect no less of him as we have all had enough with Duff. I strongly urge all residents of Darien to reach out to their legislatures and say no to all the bills proposed. I thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cardone. Appreciate your comments. The next up I have is Janet, Janice Jennings of 6 Homewood, and after that, we have Susan Marks. Ms. Jennings, are you here?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Great, thank you. Where are you? There you are. Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Olveny and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Janice Jennings and I live at 6 Homewood Lane. Thank you for hearing my testimony in opposition of the proposed zoning bills in this legislative session. I've lived in Darien for 28 years and have raised my four children here, including 21 consecutive years and still counting in the Darien public school systems. Clearly, I love this town and I'm sure you all do too. In a broad sense, I oppose these bills because they strip you and me and all Darien residents of the ability to participate in the building and development here. They remove my ability to be heard, to do exactly what I'm doing tonight. But in a more specific sense, I oppose these bills because they hurt our local Darien small businesses. By mandating no or minimum parking requirements for new multi-unit housing, these bills would infringe on and usurp the very parking spaces that are the lifeblood of our small businesses. We in Darien know that our main commercial thoroughfare, the Post Road, is narrow with very limited parking. Allowing 15-unit-per-acre housing developments with no parking requirements all but assures will have an additional 15 to 30 cars parking on our streets and taking spaces away that we all use to shop local. When this concern was raised in a recent March 18th New Canaan Talks Housing event, which I did attend, Sarah Bronin's answer was, quote, "People will figure out parking because if you have a car, you are going to figure out where to put it," unquote. In my opinion, this is not a viable solution. We in Darien know that our local small businesses need parking spaces and now more than ever, we need to support our local small businesses. I urge you strongly to oppose these bills and keep the important development issues that affect Darien to those that know the intricacies, the quirks and the nuances of Darien best, which is all of us. Thank you for your work in our town on the Planning and Zoning Commission and thank you for hearing my testimony tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Very nice statements and thoughts. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Susan Marks of 39 Fairfield Avenue, and after that, we have Tara Worm. Ms. Marks, are you here?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Olveny and Commissioners Lakey, Gailey, Rand, Riley and Warble. My name is Susan Marks. I've lived at 39 Fairfield Avenue in Darien since June of 1989. Thank you for holding this public hearing tonight. My comments tonight are very brief. There's been a lot of spin on concepts and words coming out of Hartford, so I want to be very clear. I support affordable housing along with economic and racial diversity. I support local control over zoning as well as transparency in all bills. I strongly oppose any current or future bills in Hartford that have state-mandated one-size-fits-all zoning legislation. I strongly oppose any current or future bills that take away any form of local control. I strongly oppose any lack of transparency in any ghost bills and in any added language at the last minute of any of the new bills. I've been trying to keep up with all the bills, public hearings and testimonies. What's been voted out of committee, what's changed, what possible changes there are, and my head is spinning. For me, this is a perfect example of why one size does not fit all. I'm proud to live in one of the 169 towns in Connecticut. I respect that each town and city is unique. Having served in public office and volunteered in the town for over 25 years, I understand the importance of listening to residents on issues. The residents understand their neighborhoods, such as the width of their streets for emergency vehicles to drive through, on-street parking, cut-through streets that may cause traffic, water retention sewers and sidewalks, just to name a few. Their voices and feedback are critical in helping elected officials make strong, sound decisions. Why would we ever want to give that right up? So to conclude, I support affordable housing along with economic and racial diversity. I support local control over zoning as well as transparency in all bills. I strongly oppose any current or future bills in Hartford that have state-mandated one-size-fits-all zoning legislation. I strongly oppose any current or future bills that take away any form of local control. And finally, I strongly oppose any lack of transparency, including ghost bills and added language at the very last minute. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. We appreciate that. Next up, we have Tara Worm of 17 Mast Lane, and after that, we have Chris Taylor. Ms. Worm, are you here?
I'm here, yes.
I'm trying to find you. Okay, go right ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman Olveny and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our testimonies. My name is Tara Worm and I live at 17 Mystic Lane. Growing up the daughter of a working-class, single mother, I understand the need for diversity in housing. What I do not understand is forced state control over local zoning issues that make it more difficult for us to meet our desire for more affordable units. Darien's inclusionary zoning requires that any development of five units or more must include 12% of affordable units. SB 1024 allows builders to bypass that requirement and build up to nine units at market rate. If they build 12 or more units, 10% needs to be affordable. Why are we allowing builders to come in and decrease our affordable housing ratio? This seems to be contrary to the agenda that the state continues to push. This will, of course, push us further away from our 830G 10% affordable housing threshold so they can then penalize us with Act SB 1068 where they will increase our mill rate due to failure to comply. The state needs to stop hiding behind affordable housing since it is clear this is not the goal and call it what it is, a power and money grab. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Steve muted. Steve, you're muted.
I was muted, sorry. Okay, next up, we have Chris Taylor, and after that, Courtney Olson. Chris Taylor, you're up, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Olveny and the members of Planning and Zoning. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of SB 1024 and any other bill that removes local planning and zoning control. My family moved to Darien years ago and chose a house close to the Darien Train Station so that I could walk to and from the train on my way into and out of the city five days a week. The location of our house would fall into the zones regulated by new proposed legislation from Hartford. I'm aware that Darien's local control of planning and zoning has helped to not only create the town our family loves, but has also created 866 multifamily housing units since 2000 with over 31% of those units approved to be affordable, well above the state average. Darien knows what is best for Darien and we have shown that for decades. I'm all in favor of diversity and affordable housing, but I oppose the idea that Hartford generated bills which would push a one-size-fits-all plan would be best for any town in Connecticut, including Darien. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. The next up, we have Courtney Olson, and after that, is there anybody else that would want to speak? If you do, please send an email into the chat, I think it's called. How many more we can fit in in the hour? Courtney Olson, 21 Park Lane. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, thank you for your time. I just wanted to say I'm opposed to all the bills. As a resident of Darien, I live on a private street which cannot sustain any multifamily structures because we live not in an AE flood zone, which is probably one of the highest-risk flood zones. And it is a tiny street that fire trucks can barely fit down as it is. And overall, we have tons of families on this street with young kids, so there's always safety issues to think about. So thank you for your time. I just wanted to give my perspective as a resident that's in that zone that will be infringed upon.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. We appreciate that. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to speak? How many more minutes we have, Jeremy?
Eight minutes.
About.
If she's back.
Is Natasha Tome? Is she here? Did you arrive?
No.
No? Okay. If anybody else wants to speak, about eight more minutes. You could raise your hand, turn your microphone on, wave. That's fine. If not, I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners to see if they have any comments or questions. And then after the commissioners, I want to ask if our first electman, Ms. Stevenson, wants to speak. And then after that, if there's anybody in our delegation that's here that wants to speak, I'm going to ask them. So right now, I'm buying time. Now we're good? Natasha Tome, okay, that sounds good. All right. Thank you, everyone, that provided public comment. That's useful to us and we like to hear what's going on. That's why we have public hearings. Commissioners, Jim Rand, would you like to make any comments? Okay, Jim's good. George Riley, would you like to make any comments, sir?
Real quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to stand on the letter that our subcommittee put together. I thought it was comprehensive and articulate. If folks haven't seen it, I'm sure it's on the P&amp;Z website and should be referred to. That really is a comprehensive statement of our views. I share it. The mantra has to be maintain local control. That really is how we've developed such a great town as we have and we need to maintain that. I thought everybody was very articulate tonight. I will confess that the Mr. McGinnis's comments about the water situation was novel to me and I thought a little uniquely and therefore particularly helpful to me. But beyond that, I appreciate everyone's comments. Thanks.
And just for the record, the Planning and Zoning Commission, under my signature, wrote two letters. One is dated March 2nd, and that refers to SB 804, SB 6430 and SB 6521. To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know the status of those three bills, if they came out of committee or not and what shape they did come out of committee. Then I wrote another letter on March 14th, which is specific to SB 1024. And I think that part of it came out of committees, what it's called, and part of it did not. Not 100% sure. I apologize. Jen Leahy, would you like to make any comments, ma'am? Your microphone's muted, Jen.
I think I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Riley said in the letters that we've submitted and we've discussed during planning and zoning, that local control is important. And like we've heard from many of our our neighbors here in Darien, that we live in a very unique waterfront community. It has a myriad of issues that many towns don't ever have to address. So I think local control is the mantra that I also would like to echo on this call.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Jen. Carrie Gailey, are you still here? Carrie Gate, would you like to say a few words?
No, I think what's important tonight is, you know, we often
No, I think what's important tonight is, you know, we often, the commissioners often have ample opportunity to speak and to have questions answered and, you know, probe issues. But I think what's important tonight, and I love that this was arranged on Chairman Olavani, is the opportunity for local residents to speak directly to both really local volunteer public officials on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but also to our public officials who run our town, you know, namely, first-elect woman Jamie Stevenson, and also our elected officials who represent us in Hartford. So I think, you know, I would, you know, I think what's important about tonight is having the public's first voice heard, especially since so much of the theme is local control and, you know, the adverse impact of the removal of the addition of broad-based as-of-right additions to zoning regulations. So I think that's important, and that seems to be a running theme for tonight, so I will leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Kara. That's great. The next person is Natasha here?
Natasha just got here.
Oh, okay. Larry Warble, I want to ask you to speak too, and then Ms. Stevenson. But Natasha was the first one on our list. Maybe now you're the last one on our list.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, my name's Natasha Tome. I'm a resident of Darien and have been a resident of Fairfield County for most of my adult life, both in Norwalk and Stamford. I'm a commercial construction and real estate professional, and also a contributor to our community through board commitments and fundraising. First at the Stanford Boys and Girls Club, I'm sorry, first at the Stanford YNC, and then at the Boys and Girls Club of Stanford, which I still serve on the board. I say that, and I give you that background so that you understand that I actually have connections to the community for, which I think that this bill was intended to serve, which I think that, as I testified in February, I don't believe that this bill is going to create any type of significant impact on affordable housing. In fact, I think it's going to open the door for unscrupulous developers to come into our communities without checks and balances and, you know, come build what they want and leave. And we have zoning laws for a reason. You know, the zoning laws, and I've seen, because I've been here for a long time, I've watched Fairfield County get developed. I'm pro-development. I've watched the South End become a beautiful safe place. The Allen O'Neill Homes in Darien get torn down and built into a beautiful community that's well-maintained now. You know, the Trump Building in Stamford, you know, when they built that, I believe there was a height restriction, and their concession was to revitalize Mill River Park. And I don't know if you guys know Mill River Park, but it was a piece of dirt, okay? And now it is a beautiful park that hosts events. It has a carousel I brought my children to. You know, it takes the west side of Stamford and it gives them something beautiful. And the zoning laws that are in place, you know, take even the good guys, right? And make them hear the voices of the people in the community, little neighbors, excuse me. And give them something in order to build what they want and make money. Now, developers certainly have a right to make money and have profitability, you know. And, you know, we as citizens also have rights. And the rights, you know, our rights as Americans, right, go as far, you know, into where they impinge upon other people's rights. This bill silences the voices of the people, right? It takes away our ability to, you know, in Darien, for years and years, we've been looking at this, you know, development that's happening right now. There was a lot of collaboration, a lot, you know. And I believe that we can't, you know, how am I going to wrap this up? I'm really worried. I'm worried about Sarah Bronin's motives, quite frankly. You know, I mean, she is someone who came here saying that she wanted to create affordable housing, and then this bill, you know, doesn't require affordable housing and anything that's less than 10 units. She clearly has relationships with the building community through her architecture firm. You know, I believe she has personal ambitions, whether those are political or, you know, whatever. It just smells bad to me, okay? I can't see who this bill benefits other than developers. And it takes away our rights. So, you know, I'd like for people to know that this, even in, you know, even as Darien residents, we have a right to be heard. So there's a lot of smart people, you know, involved in this, people on both sides. I think that there's a better way, you know, we need to help the most needed. We need to, you know, get some affordable, more affordable housing. But this is scary. I mean, we could have people coming up here from New York City, from God knows where, and building whatever they want, and then they're out. So we need to still be heard. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tome. I appreciate that. Larry Warble, wrap it up for the commissioners before Ms. Stevenson. Any comments, Larry?
Yes, I do, and thank you very much. And, you know, I think what I'd like, well, what I'd like to do is first of all, thank everybody who spoke. And I think, no, I don't think, I know. One of the first things when the subcommittee was formed, which I was part of, is we wanted a way for the residents of Darien to have a voice on these issues. And we felt a public hearing, and I think Jennifer Leahy was the biggest proponent of it, would give an opportunity for the residents of Darien to make their views on these bills known. And that's what tonight was about. And I found it very interesting that when the hearings were held in Hartford on these bills, that there was a hard stop after 24 hours. Steve Olavani, our chairman, was literally the next person to speak and was cut off. That's why we're here, so that we have the chance to speak and have our voices heard for the town. And one of the interesting things is, you know, after the testimony was cut off, comments were made that, oh, look, the testimony tilted in, you know, in a pro-direction. Well, yeah, you let all the pro-speakers go first, and then you stop the testimony. I mean, you know, how do you expect it's going to work out that way? And there's a concept that's been thrown out that, and someone mentioned it tonight on an email that they had gotten from Senator Duff, that, you know, these bills are not designed, are not in any way taking away local control. And that's just a fallacy. And I'll just use a real-world example. You know, I live on Birch Road in Darien. The part of Birch Road, as you get closer to Route 1, is a quarter-mile from a business district, which is one of the proposals is to allow as-of-right multifamily housing units within a quarter-mile of a business district. There's two properties for sale, and that's the area of Birch Road right now. If someone were to build, try to propose a, let's see, there are about, I think about half-acre lots, which would mean what, about seven, eight units, would be allowed as-of-right on the bill. If that happened today, there'd be a hearing, and I have a feeling there'd be a lot more people than this coming to the P&amp;Z meeting to voice their opinion. If these bills go through and that same scenario were to occur, there is no local voice. So the idea that local control is not being taken away is absurd. And I'm amazed that anyone can say that without feeling embarrassed. So I'm very encouraged and very happy to see that we had a robust turnout, that there are a lot of residents here. Our goal here was also to let those representatives who represent Darien in Hartford hear the voices. I see Terry Wood has joined us. Unless I'm missing it, I don't think any of our other representatives have joined us. If you're here, anyone, Euler? Nope. So very appreciative that Terry Wood took the time to listen to the decisions of Darien and how we feel about this. Very disappointed that none of her colleagues did. But with that, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the residents of Darien for coming out tonight and making your voices heard.
Thank you very much, Larry. The next person I would like to speak is Ms. Jamie Stevenson, who's the first electorate of the town of Darien. And she's also an ex-officio member of the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Stevenson, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much, Chairman Olavani. I really want to thank you and the commission for providing this opportunity tonight. And I'll apologize for the barking dogs. They'll calm down in just a minute in the background. I really want to thank all the speakers tonight. You may or may not know, but many of the people who spoke to you tonight also have been following these bills and wrote written testimony or provided testimony in person for these bills up in Hartford. And it's just been really wonderful to see the active engagement of our community around these issues. Clearly, it has invoked passion in a lot of people. I have testified on a number of bills on behalf of the town of Darien in Hartford this session, specifically on 1024 and a couple of the other housing bills. And I think that you've seen that testimony, or it's been published in the local newspapers. I thought I would take a few minutes tonight to remind our residents of some interesting data points that many of us don't really focus on a day-to-day basis. So the population of the town of Darien is 21,759 people on last count. The median age of people here in Darien is 39 years old, very young. And we have the state's highest share of youth under the age of 20 in any community across Connecticut. We have 12.7 miles, square miles of land area, and we have 1,718 people per square mile. That is the most densely populated small town in southwestern Connecticut, second only to the city of Danbury, if you're thinking, if you're looking at our region. The next most densely populated community is Westport with 1,400 people per square mile. And our neighbors to the immediate north have 914 people per square mile in New Canaan. So I share that with you to just remind us all that, you know, we think of ourselves as a bucolic, small New England town. But really, we are already very densely populated. And thanks to the good work of this commission and our other land use boards and your predecessor organizations, we've been able to develop the town of Darien and keep that small New England community feel, which I think is one of the reasons, you know, certainly in the top five, that people move to the town of Darien. Right now, we have 7,195 housing units in total. 253 of those, or 3.6%, are at the affordable level or are assisted in some way by government. Thinking about the two different concepts right now, under 8-30G, we need to build 720 units of affordable housing to meet our 10% mandate. Reflecting back on one of the bills that was brought up tonight, 6611, this fair share affordable housing plan, the town of Darien would have to build an additional 1,271 units of affordable housing to meet our fair share. If you do some quick math, and there's some smarter people than me that have done this, if you overlay 830G, which will happen, because no one's talking about repealing 830G, on the fair share plan, the town of Darien would actually have to build 12,712 units to meet our 10% affordability mandate. Just let that sink in for a moment. It, you know, it's a little bit crazy to think about. If you go on a website, very useful website, 169Strong has a calculator that you can, for whatever town across Connecticut, you can calculate what your fair share affordable housing units would be. It's an assault on local control. But you know what, as I've said in much of my testimony, and I say it as often as I can, we're doing that hard work here. We are developing housing choice of all kinds. And I'll just close by giving a little bit of a statement, that I support the powerful and positive forces of free market, which is alive and well here in Darien, not the force of government to work in concert with town leaders to develop housing choice. But that's choice of all kinds. Housing for families, housing for young professionals, for our seniors, and housing for the developmentally disabled, who is a fairly forgotten population in the state of Connecticut. And I'm so proud of the work of David Genovese and the approvals given by this commission to really stand us apart in our support for that important community. I'm deeply grateful for the work of this commission and your predecessors who facilitated a wide complement of housing choice. I'll continue to advocate for our town and the preservation of these decisions being made by the folks who know this community and who are accountable to the Darien public for their decisions. Thanks so much for having this forum and for letting me share a few of my thoughts.
Thank you very much, Jamie. I just, some of those numbers really blew my mind, Jamie, if you don't mind. But I said at the very beginning, we did its housing study in February and March of the pandemic year. We built 866 units over 20 years. That's 31% affordable. How you can get another 1,000 in less than 20 years? I never thought of that. Thank you. Okay. The next people I would like to invite to speak would be, first, our state representatives, and then our state senators. I don't know if Mr. Matt Blumenthal is here or not. If he is, you can say hello. And if he's not here, the next person would be Ms. Terry Wood, who's the state senator for Darien and state rep. And I do see Ms. Wood. Terry Wood, welcome.
Great, thank you.
Matt is here. Do you want to, Matt, I think, is that Matt Blumenthal?
Yeah.
Matt, would you like to go first, sir?
Go ahead.
Mr. Blumenthal, you're welcome to speak. Your microphone's muted, sir. You're still muted. Now I think he's frozen.
Have Terry go first.
Okay, Terry, you want to go first?
Matt, would you want to, Matt? Well, you know what, I will shoot him a quick text and see if.
I was going to go, senior senator, senior representative second, and then you guys go by junior and senior? I don't know. Mr. Blumenthal, your microphone's muted. If you turn it on, we can hear you. There you go.
Okay.
And welcome, sir. Thank you for coming.
Everybody, sorry.
I was just going to send you a text, Matt.
Apparently, the GoToMeeting is the one platform that I have not become acquainted with enough to operate properly. I was very, I was having a bit of confusion there, trying to figure out how to unmute myself. Good to be with you tonight.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, what were you asking for? I'm sorry, I got on late just now.
I'm sorry, we just concluded the general public comment, and I want to invite any of our state delegation to speak. Representatives going first, and then senators, if they're here, going second. So you have the town of Darien public in front of you, if you want to speak. Your floor is open to you, sir.
Well, I hesitate to go in front of Representative Wood because she's actually senior to me in the legislature. But, you know, I guess I would say, you know, the short version of what I have to say is that there's been a number of bills contemplated in the legislature so far, having to do with the topic of zoning. And you've identified a number of them and been discussing a number of them tonight. Some of them have gone forward out of committee at this point. Some of them, I'm aware of, of the ones I'm aware of, I believe 1024 is probably the one that's been prominently, or most prominently discussed, have emerged in somewhat more limited form. I haven't had a chance to examine all these bills in detail because I'm not on the committees where they've been considered. But now that they've emerged from some of those committees, I'm going to have the opportunity to take a look at what language they actually contain. And I've discussed this with other folks, especially from Darien, who've been interested in where I come from on these issues. And to me, what is a where I come from on these issues. And to me, what is important is striking the right balance. Obviously, we need more affordable housing in Connecticut. We need more housing to be affordable in Connecticut, and that's especially true in Fairfield County. However, I'm not supportive of widespread measures to intervene in local zoning, to take away the authority of local communities to decide how and where they're going to be placing new housing. Because obviously, communities know themselves better than we at the state can. And so broad brush stroke solutions are usually not the right ones on this point. So I'm gonna continue listening to folks from Darien for their perspectives on these bills. I'm going to dig into these bills to see exactly the provisions they contain, having come out of committee. And I look forward to continuing to discuss them as we move forward. I know there are a lot of concerns about how these bills could affect Darien. And I'm very attentive to those concerns. And I look forward to continuing to discuss them with you.
Thank you very much, sir, and appreciate you coming to our meeting tonight. That's very, very thankful. Ms. Wood, you would be up next before we see if any senators are here. Ms. Wood, go ahead, please.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Olveny, and thank you to the, all the commissioners. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Jeremy and Fred for all the work they've done on on the planning and side, on the administrative side in the town. Certainly, a lot of work on your end. I also appreciate everyone giving their public testimony tonight, and so we can hear your thoughts. Because I know, and I know Matt feels this way as well, Matt Blumenthal feels this way as well, that it's very important to hear all the voices and hear public comment and hear different perspectives. Because without, that's our job, is to represent your voices in Hartford. So I also appreciate the opportunity to just share a few of my thoughts. And I'm also not on any of the committees that has oversight on these bills. I have followed it fairly closely, though, because it would have such a significant impact on Darien. I'm supportive of four aspects of, and I will just speak to Senate Bill 1024, because that was the bill that had everything in it. And then the other bills were broken out into sections of it. And I think the point of that was if 1024 didn't pass out of committee, the other bills would pass out of committee and they could be passed by the, by the House and the Senate and then be passed into law. So that's the process, is a bill starts in a committee. And if it doesn't get voted out of the committee, it's not likely to be passed into law unless it gets put into another bill. So 1024 had all the provisions. It was the entire wish list of the proponents of this legislation. I definitely support ADUs. In fact, 10 years ago, Fred Camillo, who's now the first selection of Greenwich and I, along with Jonathan Steinberg, who's a Democrat representing Westport, introduced legislation that would allow ADUs, accessory dwelling units, to be counted for under 830G. So I have been a long proponent of that. I do believe it should be enabled at the local level. Each town should decide whether that's right for them. I also support the Training for Land Use Commissioners. And definitely, I think what Darien has done and for Selectman Stevenson and the Planning and Zoning Commission has done with inclusionary housing zoning has been terrific, really set the standard for the state. And I also believe that under 830G, we should be able to include homes built before 1990. There's a funny little provision in there that any home built before, after, before 1990 doesn't count. You can't count it towards 830G. So that seems nonsensical to me, given particularly some of our older housing stock that's still safe and able to be used for affordable housing. My concerns, a lot of you have mentioned the concerns. I think the, as a right to develop within a half mile of a transit station or the commercial district is, it's nonsensical. I don't understand why there's a push to urbanize the suburbs. People should have a choice. Do you want to live in a city? Do you want to live in a suburb? Do you want to live in a rural area? And if we urbanize our suburbs, we won't have suburbs. I think people should, it limits the choices of housing. There's also, Connecticut is still having an outmigration of residents. So we are losing people at a time we'd be forced to build more housing. Or the opportunities would be there for developers to develop more housing. So that's, there's a balance there that I think we need to understand and strike. The bottom line for this piece of legislation is apparently to address urban poverty. And it's not clear how that legislation, how any of these pieces of legislation would do that. And for me, what I always look at when I'm contemplating legislation is what problem does this solve? And does this effectively solve the problem that it looks to solve? And I'm not sure these bills do. So those do give me a lot of concern. I, I think too, it's, and I've seen this from serving in Hartford, it's, it has been divisive, this legislation. It's been highly controversial. It's been highly charged. It's been very emotional. And I believe our job is to be rational and logical, certainly bring passion. It has to be, but in the end, we have to rely on facts and logic and reasoning to pass legislation. Because we want to avoid unintended consequences. It's been hard to see how the cities are being pitted against the suburbs. And I don't think that's right. And I think that's been a downside of this legislation, these proposals. I think there's such beautiful diversity in all of our towns. And, you know, whether it's New Haven or Darien or New Canaan or Coventry, all over our state. And I think we should be celebrating the beauty of the individual, I can't even say character anymore, but it is the character of each individual town. And those should be celebrated. And we should figure out how to knit together the rich tapestry of all of our cities and build good public policy from the grassroots up. So I look forward to continuing the dialogue. The bills have passed out of committee. The next step is they either go to the House or the Senate floor for debate and passage. And there's a lot that can happen. We've got another eight weeks before the end of session. And it'll be a very fast eight weeks. So do stay in touch and let me know any questions. And I know Matt, is he still, no, he's, I know Matt is also. Oh, yeah. No, I was just saying, you're responsive to. And you and I are seated near each other in the House chamber, so.
And.
Good conversations.
Definitely. And, and for those who haven't already, please feel free to contact me individually. I've heard from a number of Darien residents and been in conversation by email. Please don't hesitate to reach out. And, you know, as I dig deeper into these bills, I'll be better prepared to address individual elements of them that you may be concerned about. I've been a little overwhelmed this past week as it's the deadline week for the Judiciary Committee. We're on vice chair. So I've been very focused on trying to get the bills that we're getting out of there, out there. We had a very full day today, and I've got a couple more full days coming. So I'm looking forward to digging into these bills, talking more with you about them. And appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight with Terry.
Great.
Me personally, I'm jealous you guys come here. But if I could ask you a quick question. When, when these bills do hit the floor, if that's the proper wording, is there time for public testimony from town officials like myself or anybody else? Or is that, is that public testimony time over?
Public testimony time is over.
Okay, so that's only in, that's only in the sub, in the committee phase?
Correct. So Matt, Judiciary, Matt, when's your JF deadline?
Friday.
Okay, Friday. Then Approps, and Education, I think, is finishing. Approps and Finance are another two weeks. And after that, so I'm on Finance. We still have a couple of public hearings to go, but other, every other committee is, is done.
Understood. Okay.
The conversations and the communication should go to your legislators.
Okay. And just, Matt, I don't know if you saw at the beginning, there's a chat box thing on my computer. I don't know if you have it on your computer. We put your email address up there so everybody here can see it. It's now slid down. Can you guys slide it back up again? Okay, so we gave your email address to everyone that's on the call tonight. So.
If you can't find it, you can Google me and you'll find it there, too.
Thank you.
And I, yeah, I have it as well.
Okay, the next people I would like to see if they're here or they would like to speak would be our two state senators, which is Patricia Billy Miller and Bob Duff. If Patricia Billy Miller's here. And then Bob Duff, if they're here. Does anybody see them? Know them?
I believe Senator Miller is on the phone.
Okay, that's fine. They can speak at the phone. And since if Ms., if Senator Miller's here, wants to speak, I don't know how you turn your microphone on.
I can give her a text.
Okay, we got time. We're not in any rush. This important stuff.
Yeah.
And then is Mr. Duff? Does anybody know if he's here? I mean, I just see S's and letters on that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, maybe while we're waiting, could I inquire of Representative Blumenthal a quick question?
Of course you can. It's your commission.
I'm wondering, Matt, whether you're getting any leadership input or what from the governor's office? I frankly haven't heard much, and I wonder if you have.
I have not from the governor's office as of yet.
All right, then I'm not missing anything. That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
And Pat is just texting me saying, Pat Miller, Senator, is just texting me saying she's trying to get unmuted, but she can't figure out how to do it. So at least she and I have something in common.
I've just unmuted the callers, so if Patricia could try and speak at this point, perhaps we'll, we'll, we'll hear her. Somebody's talking. Welcome to talk. Start talking. We'll listen.
Pat's mailbox is full and can't accept messages.
I don't know, Fred, I'm not quite sure. I'll repost everyone's emails here.
I'm just checking to see if I can see her on here, and I do not. I just see COs and COs, which usually means caller. It's, one day we'll be back to the auditorium, but it was great to have everybody here tonight, that's for sure.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Stevenson or Terry or Matt for direction here. I don't know. I don't really know Ms. Miller or Mr. Duff that well.
Well, I'm getting her, I'm sending her a text. She said she can't get unmuted. She's phone number 3311. The last four digits, 3311.
Yes, see, on my screen, it just says CO, which usually means caller.
Does anybody have?
It's Fred. Fred's our. That's a power.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, what we can do here. That's.
I'm showing all the, all the phone call, all the individuals on, on the calling in on the phone are unmuted right now.
Okay, let me.
I don't want to be disrespectful anyway. I'm jealous they're here.
Okay, she just sent a text saying she's on. She's on the phone. Because she's in another Zoom, please give them my apologies.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That's very nice of her. Does anybody know if Mr. Duff is here?
I tried to text him. I haven't heard back.
Okay. Okay, with that said, well, it's nine o'clock. I figured we can let it go. Is Jamie Stevenson still here? I just want to, it's somebody else's opinion.
Ms. Stevenson's still here.
Because at the end of the day, the hearing, we're gonna, the way it's, we're actually terming this is we're gonna end the public hearing, but we're not gonna close the public hearing.
We're gonna still take written comments. I'll post the email address that folks can send their emails to, and we'll package them up with other letters and emails we received earlier in the day. We got four or five today. And you can certainly, over the next three days, send letters, emails to that email address, and we will forward them on to the legislators for you. As I said, we got four or five others today, so over the next week, we'll package them up. So you want to write down that email address, or you can email your legislators directly. Either way would work.
Right, that'd be great. The, the concept was, just for education, the, the public hearing, when, when we first spoke was like February or something, we submitted our testimony a week after on March 2nd. So we want to leave this hearing quote-unquote open. If anybody wants to submit a written testimony, we'll read it and forward it on to the powers that be and book yourself. And I just wanted to check with Jamie. Thank you for coming back on again. I just wanted to check with, is, I don't know if there's any real protocol in Terry and Matt.
Well, I, I think the only protocol, Steve, is that you set a time limit for your public hearing. And I think that time limit has expired. So I think it's wonderful that Matt and Senator Miller, that she attempted to join us. People can definitely email all the legislators and should email them with your comments or, you know, pass them through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they can get forwarded on. But I think the, the meeting protocol is that the public hearing time has now expired.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So with that said, everybody that came for this public hearing portion, we're gonna end the public hearing now. If you would like to send in some kind of testimony and written letter, we will definitely accept those at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Until April 13.
Until April 13, which is basically a week from today. If you get it by the close of business on April 13, then we will have those by our meeting at 7:30 on April 13. So thank you all for arriving and attending. We're gonna end this portion of the public hearing of tonight's meeting and go into our general meeting, which is the next MR agenda. Once again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on. Commissioners, general meeting, deliberations only on the following item. Proposed amendments to Darien zoning regulations, COZR number 4-2020, business site plan application number 128B as in Boy, special permit application number 314, 711, Inc., 306, Boston Post Road. I don't have to read the rest of it, right?
No, tonight, the Commission is just deliberating on the zoning regulation aspects of the application. We'll have a separate night for deliberations on the other aspects, the site plan and special permit aspects. As I may have mentioned at past meetings, no further public testimony can be taken from the public. At this point, the Commission is in its deliberation phase. Based on the evidence that was provided over the numerous nights of public hearings, the Commission now has to go through that various testimony, the application, all the evidence that was submitted, and decide based on that. What we've given to the Commission tonight for your packets is the August 12, 2020 submission entitled Regulation Amendment. It was submitted by the applicant. It's on the town website. It's three pages long, which outlines the various zoning regulation amendment proposals put forth by the applicant. I think we counted there's six of them to go through. The commission's going to deliberate tonight. Mr. Donut and I will take the comments received tonight, as well as the comments you make at future hearings, and then eventually we'll draft up something that reflects the consensus of the entire commission.
We're gonna do two resolutions, one on the on the zoning change and one of the other.
We might put them in the same document.
I figure.
We'll know a little more as it gets closer and.
So commissioners, I know all the commission been on the commission at least about two years. What we typically do is this first night, we'll talk, we're gonna talk about the, because there's two aspects, is once the reg change to allow what they want to do, and then two, once that gets done, then two, it's the site plan application. So tonight, we're really gonna focus on the reg change, which is just as a broad brush, you want to bring the town plan of conservation concept?
Right, the standard for the commission, I'm glad you mentioned that. The standard for the commission is consistency with the town plan of conservation develop and development, which is this document, which is twenty dated twenty sixteen. And for the commission to vote in in favor, they have to find that the proposal is consistent with the town plan of conservation and development. So as I said, the proposal looks to amend various sections of the regulations, section two ten, seven fifty five, nine oh four, and various aspects of section ten fifty six.
So why don't you walk us through? I mean, it's you're the best at this stuff.
Sure, so I I gave the commission, as I said, the amendments. The applicants in their descriptive application talked about the purpose of their proposal. And the first aspect is a change in the definitions, section two ten, to modify the definition of motor vehicle service station. The second aspect is to modify accessory uses in the service business zone to allow small, quick service restaurants when located in a retail store co-located with the gas station. There's a proposal to modify the parking standard for motor vehicle service stations to distinguish between those service stations that include automotive repair and those that do not. Section ten fifty six of the zoning regulations talks about motor vehicle service stations and a proposal that seeks to amend section ten fifty six point one, principal uses requiring special permit. Section ten fifty six point two, accessory uses requiring a special permit to specifically allow quick service restaurant. It's to amend section ten fifty six point three regarding service and repair. And section ten fifty six point five relative for storage of vehicles. The applicant has submitted a new sentence at the end of that section. No such storage area shall be required when the station will be licensed by the state of Connecticut solely as a gas station. So there's a number of different aspects that the commission needs to look at relative to the town plan of conservation and development.
Okay.
Let's take it from here.
With the overall aspect, is there a section in the town P D O C that says that we we should revamp our gas station regulations?
I believe the applicant in their application referred to a couple pages in the town plan. I believe one was page one oh eight relative to continuing to encourage vibrant commercial areas, promote economic growth, but there's nothing in the town plan relative to gas stations specifically.
Because like when we did this, when we did light to the high school, there was something in the in the town plan that said you should have lighted fields, right?
Correct. There is nothing specific in the plan that I could find or that the applicant pointed out specifically on point relative to any one of these specific proposals, if you will.
Okay. So what do you want? Do you want to go through this? Or you want to go through this?
We could probably go through one by one, the definitions.
Are you want to do that? Sure, I I I know I know you worked hard on this thing.
Right. We can do them one by one.
If you want, but let's go one by one, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so definite section two ten definitions. Motor vehicle service stations include includes underlined score. They want to add the word self-service, full service and combined service stations to the definition. That seems kind of harmless to me, right? We already have self-service.
Right, there are. The definition in section two ten of motor vehicle service station does not specifically allow solely self-service. But the applicant is seeking to change that.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, so so I'll just ask, and because I haven't used every single station, but don't most of the every station I'm familiar with in Darien has a combination self-service, full service, or am I missing something? Do we have?
The guy that I go to on the corner of Narroton and West, that was standard guy, which is the yellow one, which is now, I think, a shell. That's a hundred percent self-service. The one across the street, which we used to call Augustus Brothers, which was a mobile. Now I don't know what it is. BP to mobile to something.
So we are allowing that, we are allowing a hundred percent self-service.
Yes.
Without, even though it's not in our regs today.
Yes. So that's why I I would say you say yes. We're doing it, right? Jennifer, you have a question?
No.
Okay, Jim Rand? Where'd Jim go? Karen, do you have anything?
Jim is having issues with his audio. We're trying to get him up and running, but he is having problems with his audio.
Okay, we can save best for last. Karen, any comments on that?
No, but I I think, you know, just like we've kind of noticed, like when you, you know, and talk about the overlay of different bills together, I think, you know, going change by change doesn't take in the full picture of what exactly is trying to be accomplished. So like, do I have an issue with self-service being included in the definition of motor vehicle service station? No, but I think it's 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 crucial that with these larger applications that we look at the application in its in its entirety to really look at the potential consequences and the impact that these reg changes may have.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, I I get it. That's why I go back to the town plan. It I I forget when the lights of the high school came in, but it was in the two thousand sixteen plan, and they were enacted in two thousand eighteen because it said it in the plan. And 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 our plan, I don't know, it says, you know, you should change your gas station laws.
Correct. There's nothing in this town plan relative to gas stations.
Right, and so we would never be looking at this definition if it wasn't for this application, right?
Correct.
Okay, I I fully understand. Karen, I I got you. My only thing I would like to do is try to go by piece by piece.
Sure.
And then we can talk about it, because if some of the things are quote-unquote non-starters, it it's, you're right. I mean, it does, if you're not, if you don't like something, why would you go in and change it or itself or something? I get it. You know, and I'll disagree with you, but.
No, but I don't have an issue with there being self-service permitted in our regs now.
No, yeah, I got you. Okay. George Riley, anything along those lines too? Did I already ask you?
I I favor the amendment to two ten as comporting with reality.
Comporting, that's a fancy word. Okay, agreed. So that what do you want to do with this?
I think we'll go through the next, as as Kara said, you you have to look at them as a whole, but try to go through specifically if there's, there may be specific items. For example, the next proposal, which talks about quick service restaurants, which gets very, the addition proposed by the applicant is very specific, a hundred square feet of indoor space devoted to customer seating when located in retail store, co-located with the gas station. So again, it's not a very broad proposal. It would amend the service business zone accessory uses to allow quick service restaurants under section seven fifty five, which is by special permit. So it'd be a new special permit accessory use. We already allow. So this would be an amendment to seven fifty five.
So that's the question is why? There's no reason why we have to do that, right?
Right, there's nothing in the town plan specifically on this issue. As I said, what the applicant put forth were some general pages in the development section, business economics. Next one relates to section nine oh four W parking to specifically put in a provision relative to gas stations co-located with retail store and or quick serve restaurant, how to address parking for that type of situation. And then to specifically distinguish between gas stations that don't include automotive automotive repair to those who do, and that's why you see the proposed new wording. When gas stations or stations include automotive repair, here's the standard. So basically, it's creating a new standard for gas stations co-located with other uses, and that would be in the parking requirements, nine oh four W.
So this is your number C, your letter C on your green sheet?
That's correct.
Okay. Proposal distinguishes between stations that include automotive repair and those that do not. Clarify resulting standard for stations that are co-located with retailers and or quick service reflect parking records or billing rather than car repair storage.
How to treat these multiple uses on one property?
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments on that?
I would. If I if I can insert, I I don't see any reason to make reference to and or quick service restaurant unless I missed the sense of the handling of the last section.
I agree.
But other than that, I don't mind the concept.
Steve?
Do you? I agree with what George said.
Let's move on. Section ten fifty six of the regulations is now entitled motor vehicle service stations. Obviously, it deals with gas stations around Darien. So there's four different proposed section changes to that. The first is to section ten fifty six point one, which again is starting to distinguish between full service, self-service, and then talk a little bit about deleting the phrase, retail sales of non-related products shall not be permitted uses in a service station. That is in the first paragraph of ten fifty six point one. The commission has allowed retail sales of non-related products in the past, not necessarily to the extent of this application. Yeah, I think that last hearing talks about convenience stores. The second paragraph talks a little bit about, which is ten fifty six point one A distinguishing between full service and self-service and similarly, ten fifty six B, full service, self-service distinguishing.
Bean sheet here, right now you're talking about letter D's and dummy.
That's correct.
Procedural prohibition of retail sales of goods unrelated to motor vehicle services.
That's ten fifty six point one, the various changes to the opening paragraphs and then A, B, and C.
Any comments or many commissioners on this stuff? Is Jim, is Jim Rand? Did Jim Rand get back on?
Jim is still having problems. He's trying to connect, but it's unclear.
Larry Warble made a reason. Yeah, mute, man.
Yeah, here we go. So we're we're on ten fifty six one, correct?
Yeah, on the green sheets, it's letter D's and dog.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just reading the. I'm I'm trying a lot of texts here and I'm digesting.
There's, go ahead, Larry.
Well, I'm just, you know what, I'm I'm, so so Jeremy, clearly we were, we distinguished between auto body repair and paint stations versus gas stations, right? So they're they're clearly delineated as separate. And so and I'm and I'm the striking of retail sales and non-related products. It almost reads to me like, you know, you can start selling Twinkies at Grant's Auto Body. I'm 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 trying to get my arms around it a little bit here.
You go with auto body or Twinkies don't go with auto body? You're saying they don't go.
They don't.
Let me point out to the commission that the change proposed by the applicant to ten fifty six point one C is just a clarification. When we redid the sign regulations a few years ago, we've got to change the proper reference.
So they caught a mistake.
It's the the applicant was kind enough to propose that to correct. Ten fifty one C is a proper reference to the new sign regulations.
So that goes with my one at the very beginning where we added self-service on nine twenty four.
Ten ten fifty six point one B, I think the, I'll call it the, to me, the change doesn't really have any effect because the applicant has said full, the existing wording is full and self-serve gas stations. And the applicant has said, you don't need to.
So Jeremy, here's my question. So this says that so th- th- this says you can't have auto body repair and painting in a motor vehicle service station or retail sales of non-related products.
That's correct.
Which is clearly happening, you know, in in many of the service stations that have mini marts today. So did we, did those just get a exemption every time, or how did how did that evolve?
Good question, Larry. I know that that was, came up at the last hearing. But it is, if you notice, the most recent, now Darien has not really had a new gas station in over twenty years. We've lost gas stations, but we haven't gained one. This is, I think, the most recent one we had was in the late or early nineteen nineties.
Well, the only one that I know of is that one that's now a shell station, which used to be three bays, and they took out the three bays and they made it again. No, no, not that one.
But the gas station was there.
Correct, the gas station was there, the pumps were always there.
But you're right, Larry. There have been a number of convenience stores approved, including the one Mr. O'Bannon just referred to. I I think there was one evidence in the record that the one at the Amico Station here near Shake Shack also has a small convenience store that was approved by the commission. So the commission has approved them. You have not ever approved a combination auto body repair or painting with gas station.
Why do you keep saying auto body repair?
That's what the reg says.
Oh, okay, I see, I see. So I'm sorry.
It's not changing oil. It's a Grant's Auto Body.
And Bob's was just close.
So so certainly that first paragraph where you're removing, where prohibits convenience stores, as Larry noted, you have allowed them. So that would be something that the commission could consider. And then the next paragraph, which talks about business hours, for example, the applicant is strike proposing to strike the word self-service only may be offered exclusively during other business hours. There was that paragraph A, if you read it closely, really distinguishes between full service and self-service. And I think the question for the commission for this application and going forward, obviously, is, is that paragraph A, I'll call it outdated, if you will. Again, we're talking about the operation only, as Kara said, we gotta look at the big picture, but this specific section deals with full service and self-service, and when you can do self-service and when you can have full service, is that something that the commission says, you know what, we should keep it as is, or the applicant's proposals logical and consistent with the town plan?
Okay.
It's not really a huge change in the grand scheme of things.
So in essence, that means that self-service would be, if the gas station's open nine to nine, self-service might be available from nine to midnight. Is that what the essence of that meant?
I think it has. I think it does, Jen. I think when you look at at the wording that says you need full and self during regular hours as determined by the special permit, and then self-service may be offered exclusively. So what it gives applicants is, hey, you can have self-service exclusively during certain hours. I don't I don't know if that's.
That was that line struck is is has been struck.
Right, because. Right, because the applicant is looking to have self-service during all hours and not worry about full service.
Oh, okay.
But now wait a second, I just saw it a minute ago, what about the part relative to the attendant and the fire suppression system, all that stuff? What, what was that?
Paragraph B, the next one, where it says.
Okay.
Full and self-service gas station shall have fire suppression and at least one attendant on duty. And I think the applicant said, why don't you allow it for all gas stations instead of full and self? You can make it for self-service only stations.
Okay, I just don't want, you know, non-attended gas stations.
Right.
Like Amazon, there you go.
This would be, this would be everyone, B. So again, ten fifty six, certainly C is fairly innocuous, it's a correction. The first paragraph, doesn't have a number, talks about allowing convenience stores. B deals with the nuances between full and self-service. And B would require, as Mr. Ovani noted, that all gas stations have fire suppression and at least one attendant on duty. So those are not, I'll call it as significant a changes as some of the others in here, but they do affect gas stations.
So let's move on to the next one.
Let's move on to ten fifty six point two, which is accessory uses to service stations, which would require a special permit. Which in Darien traditionally has been a tow truck operation, rental of automobiles, say budget rent a car or U-Hauls or something like that. The sale of new or used automobiles, provided there's less than seven of them on the site. The sale of non-automobile related goods and services. And the applicant is proposing allowing a quick service restaurant in accordance with section seven fifty five. So this provision would allow a quick service restaurant as an accessory use to a gas station in the service business zone. Mission member's thoughts?
Just the big one.
This is Fred and I, I would just like to add a clarification here that. Quick service restaurants are currently permitted in the SB zone. However, they require a floor area of twelve hundred square feet. Proposed zoning amendment is asking that that floor area be reduced when combined with gas or service stations. To one hundred square feet.
Right, yeah, I have, I have a problem with that.
Okay, so Jennifer is a no on ten fifty six two.
George, you're up next, what do you think?
So there is no other change to ten fifty six point two. Other than the addition of the quick service restaurant by special permit, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so I, I don't need their amendment, no.
That's two no's. Kara?
Again, while it seems like a small change when viewed cherry picked out. I think allowing a quick service restaurant and then take it in conjunction with the. With their other requested revisions of reducing square footage to a miniscule amount. Which renders it, is it really a quick service restaurant if no one's really eating there? And I don't see that these are things that in our plan. Of conservation and development are things that from a planning perspective. Which I think you should look at reg changes, not for the individual applicants. But from a larger, more bird's eye view and in light of the towns, you know. More thoughtful, planned out development needs. I don't think we need this and I don't know if it necessarily makes sense, while it may make sense for this individual applicant. So I, I don't think it's necessary and I would not be in favor of it.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, I mean, as I look at the, as I look, you know, when you, when you go through A, B, C, D, and E. To quote the great Joe Reposo, one of these things is not like the others, I mean, everything else is talking about. Storage and automobiles and, you know, using, you know, onsite and related goods and services. And a quick service restaurant, it, it, there's just, I don't see a compelling need for this and it certainly hasn't been, been. Called out in our, in our plan of conservation and development that, that this is an area that we need. So, so a change like this would require a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot of research, a lot of study. As what it, what it meant townwide for me, because this looks like just to be a different, different need, so. You know, I, I'm not per se against it, but I, I see no reason to be supporting it right now.
Clarification, where it says section seven fifty five, and I saw earlier it said a hundred feet and Fred just said, does seven fifty five say it's got to be twelve hundred square feet?
So that's a separate proposal for seven fifty five, which Fred pointed out. Interrelated, we, we.
Oh, that's here.
Talked about that earlier and since I got from the commission was not in favor of seven fifty five, so they're kind of related. It would be awkward to do one without the other, so.
So if you, if you didn't do seven fifty five, which is on, they're her page one, then the quick service restaurant in ten fifty six point two would be twelve hundred square feet?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense.
It would make sense, okay, because my, my thing is, and I will let Jim Rand speak in a second if he, if he came back, but. To me, it's unintended consequences, there are other gas stations in town and other gas stations that have quote-unquote convenience stores, like the one I go to. You know, all of a sudden, a, a quick service restaurant is going to pop inside there, you know, they have to figure out parking and all that stuff too, right?
Look, one to ten fifty six point three.
Can we just see if Jim Rand?
Is Jim here, I'm sorry.
Jim, are you here? Okay. We got four.
He has sent an email, I don't know if others have seen that, but. He very much wants to be heard on this application, he's frustrated that he cannot report and participate right at the moment. And certainly before any final decision is made, he says, he, he would like to make his views known. And he's happy to put his views in writing, so as to send an email summarizing the views. If, if such an appropriate, is, an approach is appropriate. So anyway, that's, that's what he's saying.
For everyone's edification, there's gonna be no decisions on this for six.
Right, right, we're gonna deliberate again in our April twentieth meeting, two weeks from tonight. So we can certainly get Jim's views on the zoning rights that night as well. And if we need a third night of deliberations, absolutely, we need, we need to do what we need to to get full info. Feedback from the commission so that we can draft up a resolution which reflects the comments of the commission. So Jim's gonna certainly get another chance, no doubt about it.
Okay, yeah, we're not, nothing's getting finalized, I mean, the, the, we don't have to finish the rest of it for sixty-five days after the application.
Close of the hearing, so we do have till midday. So we'll, we'll quickly run through the rest since we know we're gonna come back to the. Ten fifty six point three deals with service and repair. Talked about buildings on site, which part of gas station shall be designed for internal servicing and repair of automobiles. In this case, the applicant has included wording which says. When you're servicing and repairing automobiles, there shall be a building that allows you to do that. But if you're not doing that, if you're doing solely a gas station, then no service building shall be required. That's the proposal from ten fifty six point three.
Excellent.
Kara?
Well, I guess, two things. I think it's important to have some service, especially with the extended hours and the proximity to ninety-five. To allow for some sort of service, whether it be flat tires, oil change, you know, there are often. Drivers, you know, in emergencies who need repair. And while some people may like to hang out on ninety-five and wait for, you know, an approved tow truck driver. Others, and especially this location, given its proximity to ninety-five, I can tell you as a woman, I. Would not want to wait on the side of a busy interstate highway. Where I've watched people almost get hit by cars trying to like change tires or do things where there's barely any shoulder and cars are driving excessively fast. That they may think, oh, my car may be, and get off thinking they're service stations. And, you know, they may not be hungry or need a cup of coffee, but they may need. To check the tire in their car, the air tire, you know, or something else, so. I think, you know, changing the regs to make every gas station a self-service chicken restaurant or fast food restaurant. It's important to think about trends in the industry, but I think our role is, you know, we need to think about. Our greater town planning, you know, plan of conservation and development. And, you know, also, what Jeremy, I guess one of my questions is, is. I know we have to look at when we're doing red changes, like if the plan calls for it. But what if something that is proposed actually maybe counter to things that are in our plan? So, right, our plan speaks of a pedestrian-friendly walkable downtown. And creating downtown areas that are destinations. And so if we're creating other areas in the service, right, in the, in other zones that are really meant to be service districts. You know, providing car repairs, gas refueling, things like that. And now we're adding quick service restaurants, are we allowing a reg change that actually is counter to other. Areas in our town plan of conservation and development? And so the one, you know, where the town plan speaks of pedestrians friendly, destination-like walkable downtown areas with restaurants, including quick service restaurants. Which I believe, you know, the federal development and the partners, you know. Contemplate those kinds of restaurants, are we making a reg change that is countered to that? And I wonder, like, is that, what's sort of the standard and what's our thinking supposed to be on that?
I think that's a very legitimate comment in terms of, if the town plan points you in one direction with certain recommendations and action items. Is, you have to look at the zoning regulation, is, and that's worthy of examination. Is any, are any of these proposals possibly pointing you in an opposite direction? So certainly something to think about that I'll think about over the next couple of weeks, thank you.
So this is a, this is a quick service restaurant in areas not walkable.
Right, what, what Kara is saying is by, certainly, quick service restaurants are allowed in this zone and there are some. But as we open it up and make it broader, by allowing smaller versions of that, are we de facto. Opening it up and competing with downtown?
Great.
Legitimate question.
So her, her first point was relative to the, the no, the no service. I mean, my example, and Kara, I hear what you said, like if you got into, if you got a flat tire and you get off at exit ten. The first gas station you hit is the, I would call it the Shell gas station that's on the corner, the Shell gas station. Or that's the one that's got the car wash and, and the air pumps, there's a whole breakdown area to the left of the gas station. So you can go there, you can put your car, you can walk inside, speak to the dude and get an air pump. I'm gonna get, no.
I actually had to bring my car literally today to the mobile right there and I was very happy they were there and close and.
Right. You'd rather pull off there than pulling off at the truck stop at I ninety-five.
Well, AAA was recommending that I go to, and I won't say the name, but they recommended three just tire places and I knew I didn't have a tire problem. And I was like, no, I need auto repair.
Anybody else on that one?
Yeah, and then if not, we'll just move to the last one real quickly, our last one's, last one's pretty easy, which is storage of vehicles in the regs. The reg is currently, there shall be an area of five hundred square feet for disabled vehicle storage areas. And the applicant has proposed an extra sentence saying, no such storage area shall be required when the station is only a gas station. So that's ten, a proposal to seven fifty six point five.
Well, that's where it talks with the overnight storage, right? Is that a difference?
It's called disabled vehicle storage area screened for adjoining properties and streets used for overnight storage and parking of vehicles, equipment and parks of vehicles.
Now more than unread.
Disabled vehicles, so what they're saying is, yeah, if we're not servicing vehicles, please don't make us store disabled vehicles.
Great, can I just add one clarification here, this. Ten fifty six dot five is clearly interconnected and related with ten fifty six three service and repair. If the commission is gonna require that all gas stations, every single gas station in the town of Darien have a service station. In association with that gas station, then ten fifty six point five presumably would make sense to have. An area on the site where disabled vehicles could be stored. However, if the commission was to decide otherwise on ten fifty six dot three, that. Not having a service station on every site, on every gas station in the town. Does not seem like. Well.
Breakdown spot, right?
Right.
Thing is, you need disabled vehicle storage, which is five hundred square feet. Or larger, depending on size, what's going, so that's.
I'm thinking of the Exxon station which is across from the library, right, that's what we talked about, that's the five hundred square foot kiosk. There's, there's.
There's no disabled vehicle storage area.
It was not, okay, we, they saw propane gas, you don't think this is probably a sick car?
No, but it's, this has to be specifically designated as, like if you, I, I think there's a couple in town that if you go, you'd say, oh yeah, I see, it's over there. Those, those cars clearly are disabled or gonna be worked on or whatever. So again, we're, we can come back to these on a subsequent night in two weeks. And give you a little more time to think about some of these provisions and how they work together, but. We wanted to at least start the conversation tonight and we'll come back on April twentieth.
Let's, let's finish.
Yeah, we'll finish this one, one item, ten fifty six point five, I think it's the last one.
And then you have a paragraph underneath here on the green sheets.
Right, this is the, the. Right, consistency with the town plan, the applicant specifically pointed out two items on page one, one oh eight. Was their, their argument for consistency.
Right, and, and to me, when Bob Masson does this, he copies the page out of the plan. Highlights and says, put in, you know, elderly housing or whatever, like we did on Settler's Trip.
Right, and the two they pointed to are on page one oh eight. Right, as Kara noted, they are, and you noted as well. Those two, I'll call it, policies on page one oh eight are promote business economic development. Encourage economic development and the provision of goods and services. It's not very specific related to gas stations or changing the dynamic of gas stations, changing how the commission addresses them relative to accessory uses. That is not in the, as you noted, Mr. Ovani, that's not in the town plan.
Now, can you just remind the commissioners of the standard relative to connecting Old Kings Highway South and Old Kings Highway North?
Right, when, when, and I think a couple of commissioners were here when we prepared the town plan, it's now five years ago, believe it or not. We talked about that not every recommendation in here is likely to be implemented. But it does give the opportunity for the commission that if some opportunities come along, that those could be implemented because they are consistent with the town plan. And the example Mr. Ovani just mentioned is, one of the final things that we put in the town plan. Was the connection of Old Kings Highway North and Old Kings Highway South underneath the train tracks. And consultant that assisted with that said, you know, I understand it's a multi-million dollar project, it's not likely to happen. It would certainly improve traffic flow because you'd have better ways to get north-south parallel to the post road. But he said, you know, if there is an opportunity that comes along, you don't want to prohibit it in the town plan. You'd rather say, if you're agreeing with the concept, have it in the top plan, even though it is unlikely to be implemented. And that's why it's in the town plan, so, so we'll leave it at that, I guess.
That's, I mean, stuff like this, they think about. I mean, Glenn Charler said, you gotta put it in there if you have it connected, if the state comes by with fifty million bucks, they wanna collect Old Kings Highway North and South, it's gotta be a template. So that's what you're, that's the other paragraph here, okay, so we done? George, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm just chuckling at that whole notion, I'm envisioning a, a bridge actually over the railroad as opposed to a tunnel and wouldn't that be much more attractive, anyway? Anyway, no, and, uh, as to fifty-six point five, I, I don't see any hesitation. As to why we wouldn't adopt the, that amendment. You don't need to store disabled vehicles if you're not going to serve, uh, service, to store, um, disabled vehicles. That's it. I, I, I did have my mic on. I'm sorry, I'll turn it off.
If you ever go over to that spot where Oakings Highway North ends, and there is actually a culvert there, that's a two-foot wide hole. And I guess the concept didn't make it better. I was floored when he said that. I was like, really? Okay. So I checked it out. They said it used to be there. Who knows?
Okay.
All right.
April twentieth with more deliberations, we'll start getting into the site plan and special permit issues, the standards and the regulations. Section one thousand five, section ten twenty, and start drilling down into stormwater, lighting. The various aspects of the regulations, two weeks from tonight, April twentieth.
Okay. So that's it, folks. Moving on. Wow, sorry. I really want to get this, get out of here. Next thing on, on the agenda, amendment of coastal site pay review number, uh, three fifty-two, landfilling and reguery application number. Uh, four ninety, Michael Kling, there, uh, two-three-seven Long Neck Point Road. Request to shift the location of the house in conjunction with the commission's previous approval.
You have in your packets, a letter dated April first, twenty twenty-one, from Soundview Engineering. With an associated plan, uh, for the house you previously proved at two thirty-seven Long Neck Point Road. The architect came in, uh, with the engineer last week and said, there's a beautiful tree right on the property line. That by shifting the house over a little bit, that they're better able to save. Uh, Fred and I looked at the proposal. We asked them to put together this letter, which you see, and the plans. And, uh, it's an old beech tree, and the Clings and the neighbors who live adjacent to them at two twenty-nine. Are hoping that by sliding the house over a little bit, they could save the tree. Generally, the house is no closer to the water, so it's, uh, really no impact on coastal resources. And the house is out of the flood zone, so that's not an issue. And by sliding the house, it's not going to have any further coastal impacts. Than the original proposal.
So you guys signed off on and said yes?
No, we, we said we'll bring it to the commission.
No, no, but what do you, what's your recommendation?
To approve the amendment.
Engine to where it is on here?
The tree, it's right on the property line, right over.
Anybody have any questions? George, Kara.
All good.
The commission will recall that there was quite a lengthy discussion regarding this tree at the original public hearing. And the applicant had indicated a desire to save that tree. In consultation with the neighboring property owner to, uh, I guess, provide screening. And they just indicated that it was a nice tree that they wanted to save, so.
So they're going to move a house to save a tree?
I have to say, I'm just very touched by the opening line of the letter from Soundview Engineers. Dear commission members, the purpose of this submission is to save a very fine beech tree. I just find that. And, um, uh, that the owners thems, like, and the applicants. Noticed, and their engineers and their professionals said, you know, with this foundation, I'm going to be like, even the tree, you're going to kill this tree. I don't know. I, I find it's very admirable and like, I don't know.
Want to put an A D U in the treehouse, that's a.
I want to pose by the tree. I want to see the trees.
Everyone approve the tree, the house moving for the tree? Six zero. We can't find him.
We can't find Jim.
He's listening.
I know Jim's listening.
All right, um, next.
Okay, the next one's kind of interesting.
Let me read, let me read it first. Jeremy wants to get out of here. F R Darian LLC, the Commons, Rotten Heights, business plan application number two ninety-six. Special program application number two ninety-six, landfilling reguery application number two ninety. Status update, discuss with the issues relative to phasing issuance of C of Os and whatnot. Jeremy, take it away.
I'll start in and Fred will, uh, chime in, but basically, one of the issues here is, uh, the great news, we're really pleased to say that the Walgreens. That you see there, next to the existing Walgreens, that's going to be ready to open very, very soon. Uh, and they're looking for a temporary C O, possibly later this week. So one of the issues we talked about, which would allow them to start stocking and get employees trained and things like that. One of the things we talked to Federal Realty about is usually, uh, no, if you think of a single residential property or a single commercial building. You just say, okay, when you're done with everything, we'll issue a C O. In this case, clearly, this is phase one of many phases. So, uh.
Yeah, we do all saw T C of Os are normal.
Temporary. Well, I think what we're looking for in a case like this is Walgreens is going to be in operation for maybe a year. Or two, or three, or four, till that whole project is done. They, they can't really operate with a temporary C O for, let's call it two and a half years. So Fred's been working closely with Sarah Ford, Redness and Mead and the team on kind of sorting out. Uh, what would be appropriate, and, uh, we're here basically to say, look, uh, the staff will start. Making these determinations based on safety, working closely with the fire marshal, building official. That, uh, before a C O or even a temporary C O is issued, that everything is safe, people can get in and out, they can park safely. They're not driving through a construction site, uh, to get to where they want to go, that they're not going to be hit on the head with falling debris or anything. Brad, you want to chime in here?
Yeah, I think Jeremy outlined it pretty well, but, um, I would just add that we, the applicant provided. A roadmap to enable the, uh, the ability for the applicant to, to receive. Full certificate of occupancies for various phases of the project. As Jeremy noted, this is a multi-phase, multi-year project. So under the current approval. The applicant would only be eligible to re, to receive temporary C Os for, in this case, for example. Temporary C O for the Walgreens. These temporary C Os are typically, typically good for ninety days or so. And then that temporary C O would need to be reissued. So in a case, it, when looking at Walgreens, you would be looking, or the planning zoning department would be looking at. Probably issuing this temporary C O for this, for this one phase of the project, three or four different times. Until the full project, all phases of the project were complete. So the applicant, Federal Realty, had emailed us or provided a roadmap. To enable them to secure full C Os for various phases of the project. Um, which we emailed to you later this afternoon.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a hundred percent. This is something that happens in the commercial world all the time. Where you get temporary C Os and, and the fire marshal charmed in and also said that, yes, that's fine, but they a hundred percent realize. That safety is, is a matter, and all the, the, um, the fire hydrants shall be maintained and whatnot. In my, in my opinion, and I go to that Walgreens all the time, is Federal's done a bang-up job by putting in, they put in a parking lot, they took out a parking lot. Put in a parking lot, they took out a parking lot, just so it's all temporary parking. So they're, you know, these guys are smart guys. I have no problem with this whatsoever. Anything to move this thing along faster and get Walgreens open and get the thing going. And help Federal, I'm all for it.
I would just, if, if the commission is looking for any additional clarification from the applicant at this point. On the status of what's happening on the site with Walgreens, with the drainage, with phase two of the project. Uh, Sarah Ford from Federal Realty is here tonight to answer any questions if necessary.
Sarah Ford wants to give her three minutes of fame, she's more than welcome to. We love people like her coming into.
McMahon's here as well, you need him.
Where's Patrick? Oh, Pat, yeah, Pat, there's Sarah Ford. Nice to see you. I haven't seen you in like six months. What do you need, man? You're muted right now, I think. Plug your mi, plug your, uh, ear pads into your iPhone. Your green light's not on. You're out of practice.
There's Patrick.
That's Patrick McMahon.
Federal Realty.
Patrick, you're muted too. There you go.
I, I, I called in as well. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we got your caller number ten.
Great, Sarah, are you, I know Sarah had, like, uh, it looks like she's, looks like she's muted. So Sarah did have, Sarah did have a piece to say tonight, but, uh, I'll do my best to, to, uh, to fill in. Uh, in, indeed, uh, Jeremy and, and Fred, um, in more detail, I think described it correctly and, and appreciate it too, Steve. It is, it is, it, this is a route that we typically go, um, and it indeed is going to allow us to open Walgreens up, uh, more quickly. And in addition to that, I think achieve, I think the greater goal, Steve, that you were just talking to, which is, uh, to help us move forward with the balance. Once we get that new Walgreens open, we can abate and then tear down and demo the existing Walgreens. We can get that out of the way. We can finish the foundation of a larger structure and get going there. So you've probably seen a, a giant hole in the earth for the better part of six to eight months. Um, and at this point, we're really kind of in a, and I, we're not in a holding pattern, we're still able to work there. But we're really now waiting for the old Walgreens to be torn down. So this, this will allow us to move expeditiously there. And on to the next phase, which is the two of the, two of the larger two buildings.
Agreed a hundred percent. Um, Sarah Ford, come on, you got to get your microphone fixed. Any commissioners have any questions for Patrick or Sarah? Your earplug's not plugged into your iPhone. All right. Any commission, any questions for these two? With that said and not said, I would take a motion to approve and allow staff to manage this process with the developer as. Expeditiously and professionally as possible. To see if I'm back, I'll make the motion. Jim makes the motion, George Riley seconded, all's in favor. Six nothing.
Thanks, Jim.
Sarah, you win.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome, sir. Move it on. Uh, that's good. Request to establish, um, continue outdoor dining. Uh, next time on the, request to continue such established outdoor dining, dining outdoor activities at ten, in ten twenty-one. Section, geez. Twenty twenty-one due to COVID at the following, Darian Diner, two seventy-five Boston Post Road. Joy Ride and Anna Kaiser Studios, ten off of Corbin Drive. Uh, the DCA Thrift Shop at nine ninety-six Boston Post Road. The Scout Cabin, um, one thirty-eight to one forty West Avenue for a meeting tent, which I think they had last year. And then, uh, the Coops at nine seventy-two Boston Post Road. Um, all these four or five?
Yeah.
I used to bike underneath the Joy Ride ten last year. Um, we had them last year, okay? Anything we had to know about this?
I think the only one you didn't see last year was the Scout Cabin.
But we, we gave them tents for graduation.
Could be.
They grad.
Yeah, this is, you're all familiar with the Joy Ride, Darian Diner, Thrift Shop. These are all, it, it's Steve's right, these are all last year. Yep.
Any question? Any comments, any concerns? Looking for a motion to approve? Got Larry's turn. Larry, Larry, Jen seconded, all's in favor? There you go, six nothing. David Genovese is here, he got something, I think. Are you with Davidson here? Ten off of Auburn Drive. All right, next. We good with that?
We're good.
Okay, next. Deliberation of possible decisions on the following. We have some drafts, four drafts. Okay, let's bang this stuff out. Hopefully, I can check it here by ten o'clock. Um, I'm going to punt a minute again, you're just shooting me in the head. First one, um. One thirty Leroy Adder, Peter and Catherine Thomas, right, is that right? Yeah. Proposed to subdivide their property. This is the, oh, this is the antique house? Or, I, I, I apologize, I should not say antique house. This is the house that's on the corner of, um, Leroy and Rock Spring. They want to subdivide the property and potentially, um, put the house on the market for sale or something like that. It's an as-of-right subdivision, means all the setbacks, means all the temporary lots. There's nothing that precludes it from being subdivided.
That's correct.
Okay. This was the one where I asked the application if we could delay the week. Uh, we live, not delay the week. Any questions, comments to the, um, draft resolution? Stormwater management, divested. It is what it is. Timey approvals. Okay. Go around, Jen, George, anybody questions, comments, scripters errors? Nothing? Okay. Somebody say something? Jim, I look for a motion to approve I've submitted. Jen made some motion. Look for a second.
Larry Warble.
Larry Warble second, all's in favor? For the approved subdivision, one, two, three, Jim's up. Kara, you up down or sideways? She's in, you're muted.
I think there was more information that should have been included in the public, uh, during the deliver, you know, before the, uh, public hearing was closed. So I'm going to either abstain or vote, not vote for it.
About what though, Kara? Cause I, I have, I have feelings about this one.
Okay, I just, I think Mary Castile was in the hospital and like, it wouldn't have hurt to just hear the town historian on it. That's all.
I will just say, I appreciate Kara's thing, but, uh, I think that if someone buys a house and it's not placked. And if, I, I just, I don't want to tell people what they can or can't do if, if what we are.
I don't necessarily disagree, I just don't understand. I just would have, I just think we have a town historian. And hearing what she had to say, I don't see how that could have hurt.
Five to one.
Okay, we're going to put you down as, as a, um, no then Kara, so, okay? Okay, so five one. Great. All right, next. Next, next, thanks. What do we got next?
Next is ten twenty Post Road, parlor, wine and pizza.
Okay, a Mavit, uh, where am I? A Mavit's special program application number two, um, two four eight A. Baywood Post Road Associates Two LLC, parlor, wine, pizza, ten twenty Boston Post Road. This is the application from, uh, Mr. David Genovese and his, um, wine and pizza guy. They want to be able to make dough in the basement. Um, pretty straightforward. We allowed it over at, um, at Darian Diner, which is now like, it's not even called Darian Diner anymore. Organic or diner? Questions, comments, scripters errors? In here?
Just, uh, are, in terms of the music, are we consistent with on the first page? That say they want to get approval to allow live music occasionally within the restaurant? But then, we talk about, uh, occasionally within the restaurant among the findings. But I think our approval, um, B says indoor or outdoors.
Yeah, let's change it on page one, George, because, uh, you're right, the applicant did say indoors or outdoors. So we could just say on page one, allow live music.
At the restaurant.
At the restaurant. Or.
Okay, yeah.
Occasionally at the restaurant or just at the restaurant?
Just, yes. Yeah, the restaurant, because their outdoor seating is, that, that outdoor seating of the program is permanent.
Yeah, you can do a violin or guitar, drum.
Got it. Sure the landlord will control that.
Violin, Jeremy. I agree. There's nothing I like more, a little string quartet.
Any questions, comments, edits to this one? With that said, I'd attend a motion to approve as edited or as amended. Is that Jim Rand again? Or Jennifer, Jennifer, you like violins. Can you give me a motion? Jennifer makes the motion. Jim ran you a second? Jim Rand's a second, all's in favor? Six nothing.
Great.
That guy gets his restaurant and he's, he's making dough in the bas, in the basement. He's making dough in the basement, man. That guy gets his restaurant and he's, he's making dough in the basement, he's making dough in the basement, man. Cool. All right, next. But back, it was still a ten, it, it, the, this is Bodega, right?
Bodega, outdoor dining.
Okay. Amendment to, amendment to special program application number two oh two C is in Charlie's Site Plan. Site Plan, nine eighty Boston Post Road Associates, Bodega Taco Bar, nine eighty Boston Post Road. This is to create that fancy outdoor dining thing that we approved, that we said was a great idea.
Yep. You know, he liked it.
Air be like.
Has approved it.
Everybody approved it, now it's up to us. Are we going to talk about his thing that came in the mail yesterday or no, or today?
Yeah, it's, it's just a minor, it just gets approved.
Any questions, comments, scripters errors to this one, everybody? He's got to get going, Cinco de Mayo is twenty-nine days away. More submitted.
Jim Rand says.
Did Jim Rand already make the motion? Or Jim Randis?
Larry.
I made the motion, looking for a second. Can I get a, George Riley's give me a second? There you go, all's in favor?
Two, three, four, five, six, got it.
Six, all right, fantastic. Taco guy's got his outdoor pergola. Next.
No pergola, outdoor with the umbrellas.
Outdoor with the umbrellas, no pergola, sorry.
Forty-one homes.
Right, next. Blood Down Treasure Application Number four oh five, Landfilling Regaining Application Number four ninety-seven, Ryan and Diana Blackson, one forty-one Holmes Avenue. Oh, this is, this is the guy that's raising his garage six inches to get out of the flood zone. He's written like half the garage, six inches to get out of the flood zone, and the, the engineer was really, really nice.
Compensatory storage in the back and in front, a little fill in one area, cutting in two other areas, and they'll be out of the flood zone.
Yeah, the floods on his insurance goes down. Okay. Questions, comments, scripters errors? These things are all pretty clean, we got staff that makes this stuff bulletproof nowadays. Any excess tier must be trucked away, if stockpile is required, stockpile should be looked at outside the flood zone, that makes sense. Okay. Site plan. Questions, comments, scripters errors, nothing, looking for a motion to approve as submitted? I think George Riley just made it, Kara Gately seconded it. All's in favor?
Six here.
Jen, you in? Jen's in. All right, fantastic. You get your four things, you get one correction. Next topic on the agenda, approval of minutes. We got to do these, we, I keep putting these things, right? And I, I, I ran them all, I ran them all. Come on, man. All right, approval of minutes, going first, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. We talked about Sam Fuller's House, we did the other house on Five Belt River Road, that's the house that didn't do what they were going to do.
They resubmitted, you'll see it in a couple weeks.
Okay, we resubmitted that, then Nickerson Lane, that was a guy doing his pool. Special program. Pool house. Hall of Treven Road, another same for answers. I didn't find thirteen prospect. I didn't find any, I didn't find any edits in this one. Scripters, consumers errors, questions, comments, changes, anything? Oh, Larry Warble, Kara Gately, you going to make, prove this motion? Are you here? We have a motion to approve on Kara Gately, looking for a second? Larry, Larry Warble got a second, Jennifer's got a third, all's in favor? Four, five, I got some smiling commissioners too. I got my haircut for you guys today. The office, I got my haircut. Uh, March second, we're up to, we're next, March second.
Second was BMW.
There we go, BMW. BMW, a lot of neighbors talking about that, Jackie Harmon. Michael Justin, eight Nickerson Lane, that's it, that's the guy with the pool house again. That's the guy with, the pool house was the guy with the, the tributor that we found. Okay. Uh, ten twenty posts is outdoor dining, that went pretty smooth.
The alleged tributor. They didn't really find that pipe.
Yeah, they didn't really find that pipe, that was fictitious. And we got the, the, the resolution for March second, for, I'm sorry, for thirteen prospect, we can't change that anyway. Subcommittee report. Chair's testimony. We're, I mean, our, our subcommittee stuff's all over these minutes, people, people knew. Over minutes. Questions, comments, scripters errors, looking for a motion to approve as submitted? Jim Rand's got the motion, George Riley's got the second, all's in favor?
Larry wasn't at the meeting, but I think he watched it, right Larry?
I planned to watch it.
Five zero with.
I will be abstaining.
Right, I have nothing, one abstention.
Got it.
There we go. Jeremy's, Jeremy's not getting anything past Jeremy tonight, man.
No.
No, it's still early, it's still, it's still early. Ten thirty, we're hitting the three hour mark. All right, next. Whose idea was it to make these things three hours? March sixteenth. One, two, three, four, five, I was here too. What is this, another seven eleven one? We got six pages, seven eleven. Ooh, that's a big yard, that sounds like somebody. Better stay awake when you're driving home. Charlie. This was, is this the final seven eleven?
Yes. This is the final one, this was the one I wasn't at, so I can't throw down these.
This is, everyone, everyone's asking me questions about my eleven gallon tank thing.
I think you guys increased the margins and reduced the font for this one.
Yeah. You have five eight of recess too. Must have been really tired. Unless you approve, did we get a resolution, Conteminal again, we did his. Just put a pizza, March sixteenth resolution. Questions, comments, changes, edits, scripters errors, anything? I go, Jennifer, that was, that, is that a motion to approve, Jen, so your hand go up?
Yeah, sure, sorry, I'm tired.
Looking for a second. Very. Tim Rand's going to begin, all right, all's in favor? Six, nothing.
Six zero.
Yeah, Jeremy's abstaining.
Yep.
Hey, next one. Twenty-third, another, everybody was there, is it ready?
Yep, everyone was in.
One, two, three, four, five, yep, okay. We have another BMW night, Jeremy got here late because he was someplace. One thirty, this is Mrs. Thomas at one thirty Leroy Avenue again.
Yep.
And we talked about Holmes Avenue, we talked about ten twenty pizza bar. Harvard Meeting Model, oh, I got something on that tonight, I'm going to blow you guys socks away on that one. Let's say update, we did that again. Okay, questions, comments, edits, scripters errors, anything on this one? No, Kara Gately, you making a motion to approve, there it is, Kara's hand with a motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve, Smith from Kara, looking for a second? Jennifer Lay's got a second, okay, all in favor? Everybody six, seven, fantastic. Those are done. Okay.
And no changes.
Yes, Jim.
I apologize, but I, I, there must be a limit on the number of people that I can talk to at the same time, because as soon as the other thing finished, you know, it was, I got you guys back. I wasn't able to participate in the discussion about the zoning change. I couldn't even hear it. So I don't know what anybody said. I have some relatively strongly held views, but the matter may be closed, or maybe my views aren't going to make any difference to what you all decided, or what, so.
Yeah, Jim, I think what we decided in deference to the fact that you dropped off is on April twentieth, which is two weeks from tonight, we're going to go through it again, give you an opportunity to get your voice heard for the record. We'll, we'll touch a little bit about on zoning again, we'll start going through some of the other issues. So don't worry about it, you'll be able to, we'll have this posted to the web, Fred and I will send you the link so you can watch everyone else's comments, and then we'll start with you on April twentieth to get your views as well, because Fred and I will be working on a draft resolution. Once we get the views on not only the zoning, but the site plan and special permit. So don't worry about it, we'll get you the link, we'll get you the even, the real timing as well. What Channel seventy-nine has been nice enough to do is time link everything, so you're able to click on a certain part and it skips right to that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, my thanks to all the other members of the commission for their understanding and cooperation.
Just, just as an overview, Jim, George Riley did note that you dropped off, and I think maybe you guys had some communication, so we knew that you weren't there. We don't have to decide on this application for sixty-five days after the application's done, so there's going to be no, no final decision on this until the middle of May, right?
All right.
Three eleven, so we got a ways to go, we got a couple more, at least one, maybe two more nights deliberations.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. The only thing I want to is mention is one, one, thank you everybody for the public hearing. I think that went very smoothly, I was really proud, and what everybody said, it's amazing how people are really paying attention to us, and everybody's inside all the commissioners and, and all your questions, thank you. That said, the only other thing I would say is if you look at the minutes of last meeting, we talked about the hybrid meeting model. I've got some good news, it's not all the good news, but I got a memo from, and I might be the first one saying it, I got a memo from Jim Cameron, that they are putting flat screens into room two oh six. Somebody's paying for it, either they got a state grant or someone's paying for it, I don't know where the money's coming from. But we're, instead of having easels and guys doing stuff on easels going forward, when these flat screens go in there, they got three thousand five hundred dollars to spend, and there's a bunch of people going around trying to figure out where these flat screens are going to go. So we're moving into, out of the dark ages into the twenty-first century, or twenty-second.
Looking forward to it.
Everybody's excited. With that said, it is ten fifteen. Any two-thirds, any other business, we're caught to two-thirds vote? No votes will be taken, no will be cast. Our next meeting is April twentieth, after that, we have April twenty-seventh, and what are we doing at those meetings?
This can be a mix of public hearings and general meetings. So on April twentieth, we have a few minor public hearings, but we're going to deliberate again on seven eleven, and maybe time permitting BMW as well, we'll see how it goes.
On the twenty-third, twenty-seventh, oh, okay, great, all right, got it. With that said, it is now somewhere around ten fifteen, ten sixteen. I would add finish a motion to close this Planning Zone Commission meeting. That's Kara Gately. Larry's, Larry Warble seconded, all's in favor? Thank you, everybody, great night.
Thank you.